We'll go ahead and get started with me, mate. Um, just a reminder to everybody watching, if there is anyone, it's just a work session. We'll public comment if there is any happening to come up, but there won't be anything voted on tonight. So it's just for general stuff. It's a root.
Thank you, Chairman Sardar. Um, so it is a work session. We have two topics. The first work session, um, some questions came up at both the last planning commission meeting. And uh similar related questions came up at a board of trustees meeting. Related to the zone map updates and the P public zone district. Um, so that's the first topic on the work session. The second topic. Um, is an overview and refresher on roles and responsibilities of the planning commission. Um, I'll do some presenting. I also invited Dan Sapiens, the town attorney. Um, to provide some legal context for uh roles and procedures for the planning commission. Uh, it's always nice to do a quick refresher reminder on those topics. Um, so that's, those are the two topics. Um, first one is the P public zone district map. Um, just to kind of orient you, um, in your packet, you were provided. Two versions of the draft zoning map, a map A. So. Current draft zoning map this planning commission has already taken a look at and made some recommendations on. And we numbered uh the properties that are proposed, that are either currently zoned. P public or proposed to be zoned P public as part of the zone map updates. And then in the larger context of town wide. We tried to look at what are the, what are the types of properties are out there and what were those? Either presently zoned or or previously zoned. And wanting to provide some context and as to. What are the other open spaces, trail connections, side street, uh, street yards? Wh- what is out there that might be? Within the category of the P or the intent of the key public zone district. Um, your packet also included the statement purpose or the purpose statement for the public zone district as well as some definitions. Uh, from your existing land use code. So the approach that staff took in preparing this was to first of all, identify an inventory. Um, all the properties that are supposed to be or could be considered in under that public uh designation. Um, and using our existing codes to to kind of understand that analysis. Um, there's also a table um of, I call it the property inventory. I couldn't come up with a great title for it. Um, but it essentially just identifies all those properties with uh reference to map A and map B. Um, and identifies what's on those properties currently. Um, based on the definition for uh public access, public use, it refers to. Uh, properties that are open into the general public for where the public would be expected to to be there. Um, so I included a column to kind of analyze where those properties intended for public access or not. Um, the definitions uh also included. Um, the, the public uh parcels are intended for education, scenic views, um. Forget the third descriptor there, but I added a column on that table. Um, for.
Open space drainage or other characteristics.
Yeah, thanks, Linda. Um, so we included another column on that table. Um, recreation, education and scenic space and just a kind of a yes, no analysis based on what's there today or what is planned for the future. And then the remaining columns, we included um the existing zoning, the draft zoning map and. Where there were some discrepancies between how we've applied zoning. Swearing town staff suggested if there was a change to be proposed. Um, based largely based on what's the adjacent zone at subdivision. Property is serving and what is that adjacent property zone? Are there some ownership commonalities and just made some suggestions for if there was other considerations to be made from a zoning standpoint, what those might look like? So that's the kind of the context for what staff has done. I hope that you were able to kind of work with the spreadsheet that we emailed you. Um, and I have hard copies here if anyone would like one. So that, that's kind of an overview of what's in your packet and kind of the approach that staff took. Um, the, the table that I have the print version for and was the PDF in the packet is just sorted based on. Map A and then the, the property numbering system. Um, I did send you the, the Excel file, so you can sort that differently and make some notes if you wanted to. Um, but there were a few common themes and I, I think many of them will become obvious, but I don't want to. Tell the planning commission what you should do. Instead, I'd like to invite the conversation. Um, regarding these um different uh applications of the P public zone district throughout town. And I did bring a large copy of the um, the current draft zone map. That's kind of oxymoronic, the draft zoning map that was uh recommended by the planning commission in December.
Did you do any research on what other municipalities do or?
I did so, and it's, there's not a unified theme that I can find. There's a lot of communities that do things differently based on local circumstance. Um, I found a number of communities that have a zone district category institutional. That categorized schools, public facilities, buildings, things like that. Um, some communities don't zone open space at all. They just identify on the map as this is a park. Or this is open space. It doesn't have, because zoning implies that there's a list of permitted uses. And if it's a park, it's a park called, if it looks like a duck and sounds like a duck, let's call it a duck kind of approach. Um, and everything in between. Um, so there was a um, kind of, that's, that's from a zoning standpoint. That's not helpful. And one of the other things that I did see, um, just kind of looking at some other communities in, in the vicinity. Um, and other jurisdictions where I've, I've worked in the past. Um, a lot of um, open spaces, if it's, if it's not. Truly a, a public park or a dedicated open space for like uh conservation easement or protecting wetlands or some other. Public purpose, if it's HOA owned, it's usually zoned similar or the same as the property that it serves. And we have some instances of that um throughout town. Um, but it's certainly not consistent. There are definitely some anomalies, um, and some that. Staff looked at and said, well, I wonder why that was that way. Um, and without having the historical context for every property in town and the history behind those decisions. Um, the zoning map update is within the planning commission's purview to make recommendations. So if there's something that's inconsistent, we want to clean up, this is a good time to have that conversation.
I am all for cleaning up public. I think is an absolute last resort. Would be creating a brand new zone holster, because that just doesn't impact the map that impacts. The compliance that impacts the list of the lawful uses, that impacts our table. It impacts everything if we're talking about creating new zoning, the new zone classification rate.
Yeah, we, yeah, we'd have to certainly go through that process if that was the direction we wanted to go.
I, I would love to have any and every conversation before that.
I think that with logic and reason, the things that should be. So not, not zone public instead of public being a catchall for everything. I think there's always an appropriate thing, you know? One of the consistencies I saw when we talked before, when I was looking at. Other municipalities, mostly in Northern Colorado, that were similar in size to us was. The zoning of what's adjacent and things like that, like what we thought. And that's. I mean, I don't see anybody trying to do anything with the drainage. I think it being zoned the same as. The whole time. Yeah, housing is right there.
And uh Lisa, if you don't mind, the example that, that uh Lisa's pointing to is. Um, at the intersection of um, it'd be the northeast corner of County Road nine and County Road sixty-two E, north of River of Life. On the current zone map, that's in effect today, there was no zoning on that particular parcel and staff had identified. Uh, any property within the town limits should have a zoning district applied to it. And so we had recommended. The adjacent property is town homes and fits the R three designation. And it's owned by the HOA, zoned the same as the adjacent property. That was the specific example Lisa had brought up. Um, there are other examples um in town where we have that same sort of consistency. Um, the Wellington Point subdivision has a number of um, open space areas within that development. That are owned by the HOA. They serve open space. They're. Not open to the general public, but they're open to more than a single owner. Um, and those are all zoned R two consistent with the subdivision zoning for all the, the residential parcels. Um, so that pattern could be replicated throughout town consistently, uh, I think relatively easily. Um, were there other specific examples that?
Well, I know like in Wellington Downs, we talked about that only because that is. So on, on the. And the McClellan and Jefferson, there's a little pocket park there, which is obviously. And then you just go down like two blocks, you know, the other end of Wellington Downs or in the McLeone. There's a, a detention pond that most certainly serves our community and you would be foolish to try to do anything else when it rains there. Um, it's also zone public, but it really is just a detention.
That, that would be a part of on it map, uh, map A, that's eighteen. So can I?
I think so.
Yeah, that's what it's, so um Cody, on the example that uh. Lisa brought up with the R three and the parcel that, you know, that's just north of the River of Life. You know, so if you zoned R three. And obviously we all know it's a pantry, so. What does it mean then? Well, it's R three, can't you, why can't you build a house on stilts on it? You know, is there anything that would be indicated somehow, even though there's a zoning? There's R three, but in fact, it's uh. I guess that's a zoning use and not. See the question I'm trying to get at, but.
I think so, yeah. Yeah, so there's a, a couple of things that would come into play and I'll, I'll go through them, not in any particular order. Um, but in, in every parcel is a little bit different, right? Because some of them are owned by the town, but when anyone trying to build something on town property is going to be a no. Um, so we have that protection on many parcels. If it's owned by an HOA or, or a, a community uh association, the association would have to feel that. And good luck getting a hundred percent of your neighbors to agree with you on something that usually doesn't happen. Um, so those are some of the ownership uh responses. Um, many of the detention areas, um, many of our parks are identified on the plat as an outlot. Or a tract and outlots and tracts are not developable. They would require plating to be made into a lot. A lot is a buildable um. Parcel of land, um, tracks and outlets are, are not buildable, so we wouldn't be able to issue a building permit on those. Um, and of course you, any structure on any land anywhere in the town requires a building permit. And so if someone were to say, I want to build a house on stilts in this drainage pond, we wouldn't issue a permit for that. It's encumbering the drainage. Um, possibly perhaps a design on stilts or something may allow flow underneath it where it wouldn't be. Our, our town engineer would have to handle that one.
No, I was, I was just kind of curious. That was, again, don't want to, we, I think we're, it's like. The transitional zoning we were trying to resolve, stuff that was catchall, I was like. I was just curious that we're not going to create some other issue that someone comes in and says. And why do you have to build this? Right? So, okay.
And I think it's, it's one of the elements or one of the um protections or safeguards that I didn't mention um is easements. Um, many of the, the tracks or outlets are identified for drainage purposes, which has an easement associated with it. And easements can't be encumbered with permanent structures. Um. And I, I think I'd be remiss if I didn't also point out that some of the. Um, parcels that we've identified, just for the context of what is a park, open space, HOA own, you know, open space. An HOA may have the ability to build a community uh facility, like a playground or a clubhouse on one of their. Tracks or parcels, but those are usually identified on the plat as, you know, track day is. Owned and maintained by the HOA for the purpose of. And it defines open space drainage trails, community facilities, something of that nature. So. Um, there is a little bit of nuance on a parcel by parcel basis, but those are the general things that we would look at in terms of what are the safeguards to protect. Uh, a piece of property from being developed for purposes that's not intended for.
This sums up a lot. This was very helpful to read through and see where the changes were. And you know, as I looked at it, it looks more like historically. You know, on map A. It seems like that was the original and it was all town of Wellington. Anything that was owned by town of Wellington, P town of. It wasn't really given any consideration as to is that the appropriate? Maybe zoning for that, just because it was owned by. The public, by the town. So I think that's how you had explained it to me before too. Um. So, but you know, then, you know, we look at the town building down here. You know, and that had been. Done differently, even. Before, you know, they bought it, you know, and all this, so.
Yeah. And, and Linda, I, if I can interject for just a moment, I, I thank you for bringing that up. I, I did include um some of the town parcels on these lists. Um, simply because that, I think that was a line of thinking at some point and maybe the town didn't. Um. Use that consistent thinking throughout all of its history. Um, but there was, there certainly seems to be a pattern of if it was owned by the town, then it was just assigned to public zone district. But that's not the case for um, like the, the town hall um on Cleveland, the old town hall on Cleveland, this one of us refer to it. That is zone C two and has been known C two for a long time. Um, when the town built the new municipal service building on Third Street, it's currently zone transitional. Our recommendation was to zone it C two because it is an office building and office buildings fit within C two. Um, zoning categories, so um. And we have other buildings like um our uh water treatment facility and wastewater treatment facility that are outside the town limits that are not presently zoned. Um, but if they were in the town or become part of the town someday, we'll apply a zoning district. We'll have to have that same conversation. Does public zoning make sense? There's clearly no public access intended for. Our drinking water treatment facility.
And cemetery was the same.
Cemetery is, is outside the town limits. It would need to have a zoning category if it's annexed to the town someday. Public zoning might make sense for that. It's open to the public. You can go and visit loved ones.
Um, just like a park.
It is a lot like a park in other communities. Yes, beware. Um, but another community is cemeteries and parks are in the same category. And even in the same, part of the parks and recreation maintenance crew because of the maintenance responsibilities.
Um, and another question on map A, I cannot find number thirty or thirty-one.
They're tiny, right? They're. And I know, and it came up at the last minute because I didn't realize that that had happened that way either, so.
So. Yeah, so, yeah. That's right. I haven't been long. I probably saw it. I see that now.
So, um. And, and Commissioner Whitehouse had emailed. That question to staff as well, just kind of background on those parcels. So while it's up, um, thirty and thirty-one on the A. Or I'm in the Boxholder Business Park uh area, um, it's. Land that's west of West First Street. Um, it's essentially, it's drainage. Um, it's the, the roadside ditch uh along the private street. It's the Berman Embankment that separates the, the road drainage from Boxholder Creek. And there's a couple of outfall structures.
Up to the creek.
That, yep, so it drains to the creek. There's, there's some trees and things planted along there to kind of beautify that, that corridor. Um, and provide some screening between Buffalo Creek Park and subdivision from some of the light industrial uses for the east. Um, but there's, there's a couple of parcels there. I think there's even a third one that um. We didn't number on this, but it's in the same vein. It's north of uh track thirty or thirty-one that we've identified. Owned by Boxholder Business Park. It's open space and drainage. Um, it's private ownership owned by the association. There's one, the very. I think it's thirty-one is owned by, uh, oh, thirty-one's the HOA, so thirty is. Thirty is owned by Azure, a private holder.
Yes.
Our understanding is that they, an- anecdotally, our understanding is that they acquired it at tax sale. Uh, but in staff's opinion. Yeah, um, and you know, not, just not right, wrong or indifferent, just that's the information that we have available to us. Um, but uh. It would be my opinion, um, that none of those tracks are buildable lots because they're not identified as a lot. They're all tracks. Um, and they're, the function of which is drainage and open space. And for all intents and purposes, they're like seventy-five feet wide. So to put any kind of meaningful structural, structure on them, it meet all the setbacks is just parking requirements, everything else. They're just not buildable lots.
So. If we're going to make some headway on this tonight, it's our right here. Um, the section in my land use code. That defines public districts. Does anybody have any objections to what that defines? Know if that makes sense to.
I don't think I have.
Public school.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, I'll hear, I'll read to you guys, the public district is intended to identify and identify the existence of public parks. Playgrounds, rec facilities. Public and quasi-public buildings, but are publicly owned at least. The areas are intended to support the community with walkways, public gathering spaces, motorized and non-motorized transportation connections, trails, whatever, parking. And pedestrian traffic. That pretty much sums up public. I feel like that's a good place to start if we're going to start taking off properties on the map that. Yes, this makes sense to keep public. So maybe we roll through and eliminate all those, kind of like we did on the first zoning map, and then let's see what's left. I think that will kind of shave down the debate in a lot of these.
Question. Is historical, yeah, this historical fall under that kind of classification, I would assume that fall in the public type. He's but.
Could you, if you don't mind, could you elaborate on historical?
Still standing out from that definition as to we have, and I don't know if we do, I don't think of anything, but.
Just gonna say, I think.
You only black building, you're reading this table is in state registry.
That's the only one on. Historic register. I'm not to say that there aren't historically significant properties within the town, but they're private ownership.
It's possible, is it?
Yeah. Yeah, that's, that's a good question. I'm, I'm not aware of any currently. It's not to say that it wouldn't come up in the future. And I would also probably include, um, you know, culturally sensitive uh sites that might become part of the town in the future. Um, there's a historic, um. Um. Native American Trail, uh, just north of town that might become part of an open space and trail system someday. And it would probably fall under the public category for other reasons too, but. I think culturally significant landmarks or sites would be a, a good uh inclusion in that public category. Thank you.
Well, should I say one other thing, other thing? So one thing I think that helps kind of. One step from the planning commission, right, is. That for safe routes to school, when we're looking at. Potential pathways and connections and stuff. If the things that are designed to that future or currently, right? Then that helps define it because. We sure don't want to plan to make kids walk through something that might be full of a bunch of food or waters and. Burn you. You never know.
Non-motorized transportation connections.
Yeah.
Influx of pedestrian.
That's a very familiar definition.
Oh, yeah.
Right now, it's like, it's like I read that a lot.
I think that, that really does check off a lot of these, probably not all of them, but.
Well, one of, one of the things that been sent to you left out is. Actions parking that accommodated a large influx of car and pedestrian. Obviously, the community park, I would suggest that. So I don't think they have all. Well, yeah. Of course.
Yeah.
So, if I, if I hear you correctly, you were pointing to the, the phrase. Parking that accommodates a large influx of car and pedestrian traffic. Is, that's part of the definition or the purpose of the public district. So that might include like a park and ride um or a transit facility.
Um, giant parking grounds.
Could be a parking garage for downtown. Of which the high school has a large parking lot and the school is presently identified as a public known category. Is, is that, but I, I wanted to capture some of those other elements, like a park and ride transit facility type of scenario. Does that feel like that's the purpose of that statement or my?
Yes, it doesn't have wastewater lift station in it.
Well.
I'm still stumbling with that one.
Park and ride, would that not become a facility? Is that's part of, but not means it, the location system, facilities, water, wastewater, so we still have. So, so would not a parking lot be under public facility as opposed to public?
Well, I think it would fall under the, the definition for public facility, but public facility is not a zone category. So the question becomes, if it's a public facility like water, wastewater, what have you. What zoning do you apply to it? And. And it, uh, I. Um, treatment facility could easily be an industrial zone category. It would be compatible with all the other uses identified in that category. Um, so that was, is certainly an option worth, worth considering.
We probably aren't going to the burger game next door to it.
Well, you.
I, I don't know.
Good use industrial, you couldn't. It's in the county, but uh. Water treatment plant, I mean, I thought that was one of the issues they were claiming of the. Property of user valuations, he's going to say it was industrial, but in the county, it was to be an industrial. But again, that's out in the camp that that's really, you know.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I took greater offense to the way they were trying to value the, the property based on industrial comparisons. And, and like, it's a public facility that has no resale value, but different issue altogether.
So Eric, would it be easier to just start at the, just the first one at map A and just. Instead of trying to jump around.
Yeah, just.
I need a picture. Okay, from my little one.
Yeah, that's a, that's a working copy and there's sharpies there if anyone wants to make any notes on it or can make notes. Yeah, I, I got it just for note taking, so. It's not numbered, but it, we can mark it up for our, for our purposes, right?
So like if we have a conversation on an item, we can speak up otherwise. When you're looking at number one, if we all agree that it could be public, then. I don't know.
That is. Yeah, that is. So that's just partials.
It's, it's presently undeveloped and. Track one is uh along Boxholder Creek on the subdivision plat for, for um. Sundance filing three. Um, it's identified as, as to be dedicated to the town for. Open space drainage, um, and possibly a future trail extension of the. Uh, trail coming north out of community park.
Three is consistent. Right, it's not built yet. I know, that's why I had to stop for a second. Is there an agreement that they'll dedicate that to the town and just start by. Yeah, it's all, it's in, yeah, it's. Oh, it's annexed, it's, it's waiting. Thanks, guy. So, without having to go back and read class Sundance, which I guess it might have to anyway. For the time being, it makes sense for public, right? It's going to end up eventually be a trail connection.
Which would be, yeah.
Possibly pocket park, whatever they decided to put in there.
Protects flood plain along Boxholder Creek.
Okay. Is everybody good with one, two and three existing public?
Yeah. Yeah. The only thing I'm looking at is as we go through and then with consistencies, we're looking at other residential. But we're saying, leave it at that right now.
Well, it's designed to be a trap and open space.
Okay.
I think the.
Or will be.
Having not. Having not been here at the time, um, my assumption is that, that probably contributed significantly to meeting the. Open space dedication requirement, residential is required to dedicate twenty percent of the gross land area for, uh, open space and parks. Um, it's historically a development practice to identify where's all your stormwater going? And what's not gonna be buildable anyhow and say, voila, there's your open space. Um, in this instance, the preserve in the Riparian corridor along Box Elder Creek and, and facilitated a trail connection, probably makes a lot of sense. In this regard.
For future recreation purposes, just even for people who like to walk or whatever.
Yeah, it's probably not gonna be ball fields.
So.
Right, or, or the linear part, uh, further south, south of Jefferson, it's a trail following parallel to the creek.
So it's actually one and two.
I'm, I'm actually making my notes on the table, um, so.
Maybe just the ones we're gonna change.
Yeah.
Open space.
So number four is owned by the town. And it's, I put maybe as a possible future trail, if I remember correctly, four is, um, south of Wellington Point. And the reason I put maybe there was. Um, about two or five years ago now, the, the. At the time, it was the Parks Advisory Board, it goes through several name iterations now, and now that it approached. Parks Recreation and Open Space and Trails. Um, but at about five years ago, um, the Parks Advisory Board was working on. A conceptual alignment plan for the trail through the, this midsection of town to connect. Wellington Community Park Trail with the trail along Box Elder Creek, South of Jefferson. There's a mile gap there, which is through the. Already developed portion of town, and they had looked at a couple of different alignment options. Um, but all of them used in some way, shape, or form the existing town-owned properties through that section. So I put maybe in, in anticipation that there may be a future trail connection there. Um, if funding and right away and all those things come into play.
Can there be a future trail connection if it was owned R? Two, and there's one that's C three.
Well, the other, the other.
Can we not do a trail if there have those?
Well, there, there was a couple of issues, uh, Barrackanning has a parcel on sixty-four and not happy. The other thing, I think the price tag, you're down into the box elder right there. And I think the construction that trail using numbers that were a couple of years old, uh, was a million dollars to put a bikes and bike trailer on there. And I just think. That's a heck of a lot. Not a lot of money in the box. So that's why the best he's actually ultimately said. We don't think this alignment is worth pursuing anymore. It didn't seem very practical. So that's, that is, I mean, so whether you want to keep it that or.
Our ten.
But I think the, the R two designation I, I threw out there just because if, if there, if there was any other zoning other than public, I think. Looking at what's adjacent to it, it would be R two or Ag. I don't, I don't think Ag is gonna last very long in that corridor, so I.
And it's just that little teeny tiny pocket, right? That's drives me off because agriculture and public are, it, one of them, it's different.
I, yeah, I do everything based on geography. The colors don't mean anything to me.
Well, but it's really hard to distinguish because I wasn't sure if it was the whole parcel or just part of it and so.
So that reflects. That's four.
There's two different conversations. I think maybe that's a good question to ask.
So I was looking at the minute over here. So I don't know, this looks like it's currently zoned in public. This triangle, was that where that? Like the one guard, it's, it's a brick building right here.
It's the, it's a garage. It's got the Garfield feature on it because it's on Garfield.
But that's so.
And the, just the, the background on that. On the, the zoning map that's in effect today, not just this draft version. This property was zoned public and it included this piece. That is not owned by the town. This is owned by the HOA. And so we had recommended base your zoning parcels off of your ownership parcels. Instead of zoning private property public when it's not intended for public access. That was kind of one of the things that maybe started us on this path, this one along with this, uh, the R three example earlier. Was, this is owned by the HOA, it serves strange purposes, why is it so in public?
Yeah.
We'd recommended that be zoned R two. This piece is still owned by the town and, and currently is zoned public, so that would work or we could consider changing it to R two. Um, and then, yes, this little triangle piece, not owned by the town, private ownership, same owner as this big chunk of Ag. And so we just tied it to, it's, yeah, he has a water tap. Up of this, that serves his cattle operation on.
Question. Unless this guy suddenly decides to sell this property. The likelihood of there being any kind of peril to this ag property in potential to. Number four or number five is slim to know. Why are you gonna spend money? Where, where is the trail going to? Nowhere. Right, so.
Well, I guess I'm a, I'm a long-range planner. I figure nothing's ever off the table.
And that was my question in starting this whole thing was, I am a future planner. And so I do want to know what, where those trails are possibly gonna go. It's obviously a million dollars for a piece. It's not something we can do right now, but it is something that we, I feel like a lot of people have talked about wanting and was in the plans. And would benefit everybody in the long run, so.
In the future, if this was zoned R two, and then as safe for us to school, we came to you and we said, okay, we wanna build. Onto this trail, we wanna start building this out a little bit and somehow we can build on the dark green. Um, can, would we have to then ask for rezoning to put a trail through that?
No. So the, so the zoning doesn't prevent a trail from going through.
So that's good to know.
So it could be, I mean, a, a trail could go through whether it's zoned public, R two, Ag. Any of those zone categories can have a trail through it. The, the larger question is probably ownership or right to access.
Say, Tim owned that property, I go, what would you want to do, Tim? But what would that like to be?
Which, which property? Number four.
Number four is actually two parcels. One of the chunk of what you have identified here is four is owned by the year. About the triangle, right next to the triangle, right here where it sticks out. Well, the GIS doesn't want the town. The town's property is this with a straight line down, coming down there, so he owns this triangle, this connection, so you have identified this four. Yeah, exactly. Yeah, very, very close to that, yeah. So that line comes down, so that's four, and then this one is.
Still Ag.
Zone public, but, I mean, I don't know what it's.
Yeah, it's hard to see. Actually, you can see it.
Different parcels, and if you're thinking what you're doing there, know that.
Also, that's important to. Well, so then my argument would be to zone R two. And then in the future, if something were to change with this agricultural piece. Is everybody okay with that?
The table, and that doesn't fit the new scope. Like those ones that solely drainage. We should work to clean those up out of, I think.
One that sets a precedent moving forward as people and saying or whatever is maybe, right? Five, I can agree with C three. Well, and it's greatest to C three.
Strictly draining with the exact same reason.
Yeah.
Probably would see three.
Everybody good with that?
Yes.
Before we, I, I, I'm good with that. I just wanted to, to, to point out a similar. Example, further south, and we're gonna get to it, but I just wanna make sure I'm understanding the, the intent and direction. Further south along Third Street. We have properties right about where Eric's pen is, yep, right in there, we have a couple of different parcels. And they have some similar characteristics where it's open space drainage of trail. This golf is in there, um, and then along Ice Elementary, you have drainage trail and this golf.
I think is the, the lineator though.
Okay.
There's an existing trail, now it becomes a little more in line with the language, so.
Okay.
Strictly drainage and nobody's walking through it, nobody's playing in it.
Yeah.
Equipment.
Yep, absolutely.
Safe for up to school, I like that. You know.
What are we gonna call?
C three.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to make sure I was on the same path.
No brainers.
Did we, did we address a five? Is that the C?
Yeah.
That's one that's next to C three.
Okay, no, I was just trying to see, I don't have it. Yeah, I see it there.
Send it past.
Well, in the park, I think parks still are park. So nine. And the town building?
The, the, it's the old boys and girls.
Those are lots of different.
Yeah, it's just the twenty-five foot downtown, uh, the, the old storefront lots, but they've been developed cohesively as a park.
But not the green building?
The greenhouse is under a different.
I think it's downtown car, C two.
It should be.
It was a business that I can't.
And that's why it's not on. But I know I made sure.
Greenhouse is presently. They, if it became part of the park in the future, it could be rezoned to. So, so number ten is, it's, it's not accessible, it's just drainage. There's not any public access to even get to it because it's completely landlocked by private properties. In.
In the middle of our four.
Um, yeah. Yeah.
Somebody probably parks a trailer in there.
Nope. This, this, this charges the water into. Swears.
It's actually, I think, probably historically was, was Cold Creek. Um, before Cold Creek got developed over and the channel got changed, it does daylight there. And joins in with Box Elder Creek near that area. Um, but it's, it's not developable, it's landlocked, it's drainage only, there's no anticipation for. Future public use, um, just, and. I'll say it one time, I think the same comment could be made for a lot of the properties, and I'm not saying to be disparaging. Uh, hindsight's always twenty-twenty, but this is a, a, a classic example that comes up throughout town where I don't know why the town. Accepted that for public ownership and public maintenance. Situation like this where it clearly benefits the adjacent properties should have remained in private ownership and maintained by the authorities for their benefit. So I won't say it again.
But we heard you.
Like a track gap. There's no harm observing that in our boardroom.
It shouldn't.
And we got park art. So eleven is viewpoint art, park. And all the things.
Yeah, and that's just to, oh, I won't dwell on it, but you know, I think viewpoint park is a, is an example. Um, the Meadows Park is another example. Um, where they serve detention storage, but they're designed in a way that has a flat bottom to it. They're designed to be dry and they, we've currently used the, historically have used them, currently use them for ball fields, for areas to play on. Play frisbee, take your dogs, all those, all those good things, but it is still a drainage basin. Um, so it's kinda serving that dual purpose, um, not an uncommon situation. Um, you see it in Fort Collins, uh, repeated over and over again. But the, I think they're more successful in instances like viewpoint and, um. The Meadows Park because there's enough land area there to actually make it meaningful. To where you have room for a flat ball field as opposed to like number ten that we just passed. It's not large enough to do anything, you can't grade it flat, it, it's not a playable surface. So I think maybe that's just my note for, for future, um, decision-making when we have new subdivision plats is. If we're gonna consider a drainage and open space, public access area, it needs to be large enough to actually fulfill a meaningful. Need as opposed to just, it's the low point, we're gonna cover everything with one, one paintbrush.
Well, they had to change some plans on that. They did that to meet what we need.
The viewpoint one? Good.
Well, and is that, then, with that particular subdivision, is that like their twenty percent?
I believe it is. I, I, without going back and looking at the math specifically, just the, the rough geography. Looks like that was probably the intent and satisfied the.
So the park, can I, I have a question, so. Parks could be in our, in our residential zone district. You know, this is the park on McClellan, that's on the corner of McClelland and. I'm Car's Row, what is that? Jefferson. I mean, that doesn't seem to be anything other than a park, a flat piece of land that they put there. For the neighborhood, the Wellington House, that has dead grass and no one plays there.
That's sound, sound on that.
You're referring to the one at McCollum and Jefferson?
Yeah.
Some, Sunrise Park, I think is the new name.
You know, so if there ever became a point where. Well, let's sell that one, you know. No. I mean, I could, it could actually apply to the one, you know, down by me too, that it's, it, those are buildable areas. And if they're a buildable area, you know, some day, I don't know that you'd ever get rid of a park, but.
There's a lot of legislation that we'd have to overcome to. Yeah, when, when, when the town accepts, uh, parkland for public dedication, that's intended to fulfill perpetual.
Okay.
Need, it's, it's actually fairly, uh, challenging to overcome to actually dispossess, uh, land that was dedicated for.
That's one of those parks that with maybe some better drainage and some improvements. And kids in this neighborhood would actually play there. Cause it's not safe for little kids to walk all the way down the phone to the. Okay, all right, yeah, we're just, so that makes a lot of sense about parks and open space. Yeah, okay. Twelve and thirteen, I can see what fourteen, what's fourteen?
Hard because there's all, they're all right here, so Artford has all of that. And then there's twelve, that's where the park is now, play equipment.
Through twelve, thirteen, and fourteen.
Good question.
So fifteen is a wastewater lift station, it's a. Yeah, it's a shed, you don't see much, it's got an underground. Yeah, there's a lot of underground that you don't see, um, but yeah, it's. It's on a separate parcel, I think the, the town owned it historically, land changed around it and it's. I don't think it's anything, I wouldn't change it to anything other than, than public, just because it's in the middle of the public and it's not gonna be used for anything. Station.
This is literally a shed with a fence around it.
Yeah, it's pretty important shed with a fence. The lagoons.
That area, yes. That area, yes. Yeah. Area.
And that's, so that used to be the old low point. And then when the town built the new wastewater facility, we had to put in the lift station to pump out. Now flows from that point where that location is on the map. Have to pump it up so it can gravity flow to the new location. Really?
Okay, can I comment on sixty? This is, I literally therapist from my birth.
Right?
That's on the other side of the highway. I live on Longshire.
Is there a trail there?
There is a trail and that's good, but that trail goes all the way around. Oh, I saw three. And. Comes out. Basically meets up with the sidewalk at Jefferson where there is a water. Pump house when. Eighties. Like it's a great.
As you said, that, that the HOA pays for to operate for irrigation, right?
Right. But so my question is. Can you really have that zoned as C one or C? Yeah, C one, C three. C three when there, there's a trail that goes the rest of the way on along R three. On that western side.
They're trying to zone it R three.
Three.
Or I think so. So here's the, the history on that particular property.
Okay.
The. Parcel is one long. Odd shaped parcel, but it's all the same ownership as the apartments. And when we went through the original conversations on the draft zoning map. The question came up, well, but there's a trail there and it's used for public access and it's. And it's clearly a public space where people are gonna pass through and use that. Can we zone that? Public to match the purpose of the trail and the conversation was, well, usually you match your zoning with your parcel layers. Um, but there was a desire to zone it public because of the trail connectivity. And so we said, okay, well, we can show that as public. So. In that instance, the, the zoning is, does not match the parcel layer. I think from my standpoint, I was fine with that approach. If that was the direction the planning commission wanted to go. Leaving it zoned R three to match the, the ownership for the. Um, the apartments is fine too. It's on a dedicated easement. Um, for public access, so it's not gonna change the trail.
So it's.
But it's a trail. If there's no drains there.
There's, there's drains there. The area, the area between the backyards and the sidewalk is stormwater detention and the outfalls on the south end. It's just a shallow swale. It's collecting the backyard drainage and the apartment parking lot drainage and it discharges south. Or maybe it's something doesn't discharge very well.
Doesn't, well, I'm, I'm just saying, I don't. I don't think there.
The, as designed.
Is.
It was.
As designed, it was designed to be a trail.
And it would have. Because the detention bond. It's east of all of that. It was literally have nowhere to go.
Or daylights into the ditch along the highway.
It goes into the ditch down the highway.
Because this is how it looks. Like this. You got, you got a fence. You got the picket fence next to the frontage road. There's a trail. And it all just goes like this. It's a ditch.
As your drainage.
But there's no way to go.
I didn't say it was designed well.
That it already has existing. It should stay public. My argument was that the public should extend. To the rest of this because why doesn't? You're not gonna take down that, that water pump house. That's now zone C three to build something else there. Not really understanding why it's. So. It is. No.
This trail go up this way?
Right here.
Right, right in the corner.
And.
Well, this is commercial. This has to stick.
But not.
If it's not.
That's a question.
Yeah, this is.
This one here.
There's legs there. I have the funniest tender.
I think in essence, if somebody buys this parcel, because this parcel was given to the parent. Remember. So if somebody were to buy this. Then they would have this water.
I'm gonna figure out. So worry about that if somebody ever buys. Think goes.
Go to Orange.
Yeah, obviously, it doesn't.
But did you have your stuff up?
I don't think that.
Well.
Well, no, that's what I'm saying.
It needs to be ones.
It goes through to C three here. I can understand what you're saying, but you can't make it both.
For this part. Because it has a crowd. Drainage, it should be still be. That's what we just said on it.
Okay, I, I just wanted to, sorry, it took us, took, took me a minute to get it up here, but I was. All the, the property up on the, the screen. So these are the apartments and the, you can see this boundary. It's showing this is the ownership parcel. The. Uh, Wellington Downs Holdings LLC owns the apartments, the parking lot. They own the lot that has the trail. And the drainage and I, I'm sorry, I, I was not trying to be coy earlier, but the, it's just designed for drainage. This is the drainage pan and the outfall is here near these backyards.
You should clean that up. You can't even see that.
That very well may be true. It's a private ownership and private maintenance.
I had no idea.
Tell your each way.
So that's, or I think it's a separate HOA. Maybe I.
It better be.
The apartments are probably separate from the presidential. I think it's a, it's an interesting case in point that probably illustrates what we were talking about earlier in that this is, there's an obvious public benefit in the open space and the trail connection. But the entire, the entirety of this parcel is private ownership. And, and this, the LLC that owns the apartments owns and maintains this area, including the drainage, the drainage detention there and the outfall. The town doesn't have any obligation to maintain the drainage there. So. You know, the, so the, the, the way I see this looking is we could either zone it the same as the entire parcel. As I think it R three is what would be the apartments. Or you have the scenario that's on the exist or on the draft zoning map where we. Split the zoning and said part of the parcel is zoned R three because that makes sense for the apartments and a part of it is own public based on the. The trail connection.
Same zone for contiguous parcels.
Traditionally, you'd line your zoning with your parcel boundaries and if that is the direction the planning commission would wanna go. Um, the trail is still protected by a public dedication for an easement for trail access.
No, that makes sense. I mean, if it's, I didn't realize it was one parcel.
The reason subdivision gap. They, they were either getting, they had to, they had the ability to put. That entire area in another apartment. Because of our coding.
That's fair.
And they came to said, this is what we'll do. But you can't change it now. So this is, we're in. We'll put in this many houses and this is the apartments, but if you don't allow that, we're just gonna turn all the apartments and you can't stop us and we couldn't have.
That's horrible.
It could make the whole entire thing.
That's a lot of. It's got too many apartments.
And that was their threat.
Honestly, anything that's owned by. The title.
Sorry, I'm being good with you. They wanna know.
So R three, that where we?
Yes.
Alright, seventeen, that's a soccer park.
It should stay public.
Yeah.
Yeah. Eighteen. Is drainage.
Yes, and specifically drainage. There's no equipment. There's no playground stuff there that. The old drain.
Nope. It's li-. It literally serves the entire Wellington Downs.
They're on eighteen.
Takes all the, all the streets, everything slopes right to that corner and the poor guy that lives on the corner.
I can, since we have it up now, I can zoom right to it.
There you go.
Um. Yeah, I think if you look right, this is on map B, so we're gonna come back to it, but you look right across the street in this area. It's open space. It's drainage. This, there's a big. Swell there and the concrete pan you can see from the aerial photo at the bottom.
Oh, it's John's house. Yeah.
And this is all zoned R two, same as the adjacent subdivision that it serves.
Yeah.
Again, I, and maybe Bert was alluding to the, the history that I like wasn't here for, but maybe that was an instance where. The developer said, well, we're gonna, this is gonna be our open space dedication. It satisfies open space because it's open. And the town's code says it's dedicated to the town and that may be why we own it.
Yeah.
Um. And I'll stop there, but I, I think that might be the circumstance um, for why that, and because it was. Identified as public ownership, then they just matched the public zone to, to match that.
Just be glad you're not that guy. That's right on that corner. When we get a thunder's arm, the driveway plugs. Cause the whole neighborhood screams to write that.
Which guy's that's funny. Don's, my buddy listening.
It's that guy. Yeah.
Oh, that guy.
Oh, yeah. All the water comes right. Or.
Yes.
Yes. Eighteen.
Eighteen.
And that's Park Meadows Park. The, the little pale was, it was described as. A continuation of the drainage along Ronald Reagan. And ties into the streetscape.
But it's a.
Yeah.
With one.
Would be R two.
R two. And is that another detention facility that serves that back neighbor?
So nineteen is right across the street.
One.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Keep going.
Oh, nineteen was part of this. I'm sorry. Yeah, number, number twenty. Um, so number twenty is, is this square, which is stormwater. This long skinny ditch and this.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm on McCollum. Well, it extends.
Yeah, it's, it's hard to see on there. It's one.
Yeah, here's the.
Oh, it's all connected?
Yeah.
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 It is, but it's not. There's nothing in. You know.
It's, it's drainage.
It is definitely drainage.
And it serves the subdivision. I mean, arguably. There is some, it's picking up the drainage from the streets also, but every local street that serves the local residents is also serving the residents. So. I, my recommendation with that, this is essentially only drainage benefiting the, the subdivision.
So R two.
Just put like the dirt and down poop.
They. There's a trail that runs through there.
There is a trail?
Isn't.
Someday it'll be. The town's responsibility.
Yeah, the, is, that's how it was originally laid out and the plat dedication indicates to be owned by the town. I actually questioned that one. Um, and I've got the aerial map up here also. I questioned that one, not because of the public trail benefit, but because the. If this is all primarily drainage again, and it benefits Sage Meadows subdivision and this pond right here is also the irrigation pond. With the private pump house that pumps the private water to the private pond. To irrigate the subdivision. And I said, wait, if there's private irrigation on town property, how does that work? I don't think this one's fully resolved yet. Um, but.
I think it was three in that case.
It was dedicated or it's, it was identified on the plat as dedicated for public purposes. Um, meaning the trail connection. There is, there's also a, a nuance that I. I don't love, but there's a, a stormwater lift station. At the south end here, meaning the stormwater that drains here. It doesn't have an outfall of gravity flow. So there's a mechanical system that would. And if, if it reaches a certain threshold, it would pump the water back up. Um, here to hold the water there to release at historic rates. Not a.
Keep your irrigation system going. I don't know why. We should have to pay for that. Benefits everybody.
I think that was how it was sold. Hey, I just, you know, it's, that, that's just some history behind it. Um, it is, this is a pretty unique set of circumstances. Um. And, you know, I'm not trying to, you know, point fingers and say what was right or wrong, but it, it's certainly unique. Um, and I don't know what the right avenue is to resolve all of those issues, but we're only talking about the zoning.
Yeah.
Right. Thank goodness.
You guys go dig a hole in the sack of my property so I can pump the water back up then to irrigate.
Yeah, why do you say R two? I said R two. I said, oh, nevermind.
It's golf.
Yeah, that's right across from Rice Elementary.
So. Space.
Hey. Where's twenty five?
The other side.
Twenty five is, I think, Wellville Park, right? And the open space and there's a ball field there.
But twenty six is, no. Oh, there. This doll.
So.
Twenty five does.
Twenty five does twenty six.
I put it as. I don't know. That's, that's twenty five. Yeah, so twenty six. It is.
It will dry out. Let's see. It right there. Hails galore.
So this is twenty six. Um, I put, I think I put question marks. Oh, no, I had question marks on an earlier draft, but I put disc golf on there. Only because I, I see that there are T boxes and I don't know where the baskets are for those. Maybe that's not part of the. The, the actual course that people play, but there's certainly evidence of infrastructure there where. Um. The disc golf course had some T boxes.
Be playing a goal there.
I don't know where the baskets are. Baskets can move, but. There's some infrastructure there that seems maybe a little bit out of place. But it, I was just looking at what's there today. But I, again, I think, you know, I, I'd have to do a little bit more homework on the disc golf course to figure out.
Is that just a drive by? If it's currently part of the eighteen while this course. Probably needs to stay public.
And that's, that's the part that I'm, I'd have to figure out if, if, I'll have to do some more research on this parcel to see.
Who would ever see anybody?
Easements or something.
The actual eighteen.
Nobody who, 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 who thinks in that?
I haven't played this one.
I don't understand it.
I, I've played before, but I haven't actually played this course.
All that pending a drive by.
So maybe we need to figure out what's going on with that. Can you give some general direction?
But for consistency sake, if we're saying there's existing like infrastructure.
So then it, should it go to R two if it doesn't?
Then, yeah, I think so.
Okay, so that's the.
You could update us on that, Cody, after you do a drive by.
Recommendation of R two, if no disc golf.
And it's, it is still owned by the town. Again, maybe not desirable, but the town owns it, so it's not like anyone can come in and remove the disc golf. Stuff without the town's buying. And so.
Apparently there is sixteen and seventeen over there according to our. Website.
The, the holes.
The holes. There's, so it must be on. One down. Below and then there's supposed to be one up above according to the map.
I've seen.
But so. It doesn't have holes.
We just don't know if they're accessible or not.
I, I don't know either, but according to the. Disc golf on our website.
Either way, it works.
Okay. And maybe that's just, you know, going back to. Future proposals and, and future subdivision plots. We look for things like. That looks like it's only serving private brands. We don't want that to be the town's chicken maintenance responsibility.
Yeah.
But, okay. Thanks for looking at that one.
Park. Oh, that's that.
It is.
It is. It's a friendship.
Yeah.
There's only one.
Twenty eight, that would be track death.
Oh. Yeah.
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 It's, it's.
Track death is how it's plotted, tracked, meaning it's not a buildable lot, F was, was the seventh tract in the subdivision.
Okay.
And we kicked, and we kicked that around a thing while.
It's a twelve and a half acre parcel, um, and it presently serves detention for. A pretty large basin. It's, it's Columbine Estates, it also picks up the commercial drainage and it picks up. Portion, the, the drainage basin, basin, excuse me, also picks up portions of the Knowles. So it's a, it's a large drainage area.
So.
But it's, you can see, this was, this aerial photograph is a little bit old, it was still. Partially in construction, but um, the entire um. Property accepts drainage and the, the size of that pond was needed for the volume of stormwater that, that flows.
Cause that does this whole area.
Mm hmm, and areas north of, of Ronald Reagan.
I was gonna say, that pond has been there for years.
Yeah.
For a long time for.
Two thousand and eight.
Was it even designed there for? The housing that was coming up?
No, cause there was a plan.
Right, so that was put there, that goes way back to.
My.
North border irrigation.
When we moved there.
It.
It, they were gonna, my understanding is they were gonna historically gonna put a water feature in there. Then the owner dug in the box cellar of aluminum and found all there's free gravel, which they were using for something, and then I think they started selling it. To other people and.
It's a very convoluted drainage.
People.
So that drainage was not designed for the neighborhoods, it's just there and they built their houses around it. So.
And it was just a bonus for that development that it already existed, is our understanding.
Not a bonus.
I would call it.
There's a, there's a little more history to it too, in that the, um, the original. Layout for Columbine Estates that identified this as a retention pond, retention means it holds water.
Right.
Um, and then, and that's a. Columbine Estates, get the terminology right, was approved in two thousand and three. After two thousand and three, the state laws on retention changed and re-retention was no longer allowed. Um, then a few years passed, the, this land was undeveloped, um, and the, a new owner came in and said, I wanna develop this. We said, your plans are out of date, we can't build retention ponds anymore, your stormwater has to be dry. And so that developer uh, found a design solution to uh, fill that pond, convert it to dry, so it, it drains, it's holding some water right now, but it's still under warranty to. Come and make some corrections, but this pond will be a dry pond, um, and it does serve Columbine Estates. This is Mountain View Ranch is all part of Columbine Estates, and it also serves the commercial and portions of the Knowles. So it's a, it's a regional detention facility. Um, and it's twelve and a half acres in size, that size is needed to handle the volume of water that flows to that point, it's not going to change.
There's a storage facility on one side, right? It says, it's not the.
The fenced in area here.
Yeah, back there. So. And then the commercial. Uh. Who?
Yeah, all this commercial subdivision drains to the same pond, you can actually see. There's a little swale here. This is a, a concrete drain pan that goes to, this is a temporary uh, stormwater detention facility that was allowed. Uh, to be this temporary uh, stormwater to allow this to go forward. But it all still flows to the same, same large pond. This temporary would probably go away at some point now that this is functioning.
So if we're sticking with what we've done before. I mean, there's no question we should, right?
Right.
It's just drainage. Whether it's C two or, you know, C or R two or C three.
I think that's certainly one way to look at it, there is in the, um, the twenty fifteen Park and Trails Master Plan, track F is identified as future park and green space. I think that was probably based on. The original uh, development proposals that had identified this as like retention pond, maybe a trail around it. Um, we did have. When staff was communicating with the developer to solve the detention uh, here to make it function and make it dry. There was a notion thrown out there that it was originally intended for park space, should we make it a flat bottom for ball fields? My opinion was, I don't know that ball field's right next to the frontage road in a low spot is the right location to put, you know, the unit of our community. Um, I, I personally uh, was, was not in favor of that. Um, but I suppose if other, you know, decision-making authorities decided that would still be an, a possibility. Although I don't, I will continue to.
There would be a lot of money. So we've been.
It's extreme, right? So it's.
Could be R two.
There's no, no chance.
It's, it's, it's stormwater drainage is encumbered by these.
We're not losing anything by. Allowing R two to incorporate that and eliminating highway commercial. Cause nothing could ever build on it.
Correct. The, yeah.
But given the proximity. We have two choices.
Consistency says that becomes R two.
Or.
Or could be C three. Why C three?
It's adjacent to C three, it was originally designed for the drainage of the commercial, not the residential.
But the intent of C three, because you could never develop it. That's why.
Because you can't develop on any of the.
Right, why? What's the difference between R two and C three then? Now we're going back to what we just spent the last hour and a half doing for consistency sake.
And then this is the only place where it abouts up to two of them. We made this other one, C three, cause it was.
There's two consistencies with this one.
This one has two.
It's every choice.
If, if I can. Well, I was gonna compare it to. The commission conducted the public hearing on the zone map, and there were a couple of property owners that attended that public hearing. We had identified on the draft zoning map that their parcels along Sixth Street would likely be zoned C one, community commercial. And they came and said, you know, we don't really wanna have the commercial zoning, we prefer to have residential. The planning commission looked at it, said, well, those parcels are adjacent to both. Uh, a C one commercial corridor and an R four residential corridor. They said, uh, the guidance from the planning commission was either of those makes sense, they're asking for R four, let's give them R four. So it's a similar situation here, I bring that up because it's similar in that it is adjacent to both commercial or residential. I'm hearing that public is not the right zoning category, and the question is, should it be commercial or residential based on adjacencies?
Right.
Okay.
The more square footage, residential. So if I. I don't. It's kind of a, I think the next three probably are not gonna be as contentious, we can sit through those pretty quick. Maybe wanna pick this up or can that be? In March. And let Dan get his presentation in before we get too late. Or you want to burn through everything again.
What are you talking about?
We, we've got a whole. Yeah.
Yeah.
Who's Matt?
And the implications of doing this one differently.
I wanna, um, I'd like an answer, how we're gonna. Does anybody care if you guys wanna burn through it all tonight? Do you wanna get to the end of the days? Twenty minutes?
I wouldn't mind getting through this.
Hey, once I start talking over you.
I think if we, I don't know that these are gonna be that difficult. After I reviewed it, I don't know if anybody else kinda looked. I think we can burn through this fast. I think we can get really stuck on one.
No questions?
So, great. I have no history.
So do we, are we willing to come on A twenty eight? Going forward and coming back, are we investing in? Is it?
I think what we've, we've answered one question, that it's not P.
Well, let's skip that, let's go back to it. We have time, we'll go back, but then we'll get it next week.
I think that's just the piece though that we've. Like, I, I guess I'm understanding what the big deal is, it's one. We can't just ration out and wish it should be.
Well, I mean, what would your ration be?
Well, I'm asking, is there?
I understand. Say three, our school's sport footage, this one is just C three.
What's the implication, what, what difference will it make between R two and C three?
I don't know if it has any implication.
It won't change anything.
Yeah, it's.
The entirety of the.
It won't affect any of the. Any of the properties surrounding it, it changed those properties at all.
The entirety of the parcel is owned by the town and has a drainage usement encumbering it, any future use of that land would. One is, is extremely unlikely, and two, it would have to go through town approvals to change it.
Okay, but my question is, if it's R two. Does it affect this C three property, or if it's C three, does it affect these R two properties? I guess I have, I have a question, so we haven't zoned. Yet. Anything past. This questionable pond.
Right.
So if in the future we have zoning, something coming in. We're have already, we're stretching. You know, here are commercial. And you know, we already have identified, we're already on a highway. And then if we get, if there's something on the other side of. This retention pond that goes all the way to fifty eight. What would our zoning be then? That's what I'm looking at.
With the master plan.
I know that you can answer that question without knowing platform. South of, so sixteen fifty eight.
Which I know. With our. With our town wanting more business, whether it's industrial. I mean, commercial, there's your.
So master plan.
Again, comprehensive plan, thank you. We did, we did go all the way down to fifty eight.
Right.
And we went to. One way twenty five.
So this I twenty five, this is the corner at fifty eight, ninety twenty five.
We went all the way down as C three, we went all the way down as commercial.
Commercial, it doesn't, and the future land use map doesn't identify C one, C two, C three, this is commercial.
We didn't have it then.
Which is different than what it showed for, like, industrial has a different color.
Case for C three. No, I'm, I know, not necessarily, but what I'm thinking is, we do, we've got C three. And then we've got. R, which is a retainage pond, and then we start with C three, so say we could get. Uh, consistency is on the highway.
I think, is, is your concern that, and I'm.
Maybe still doesn't matter.
The cursor doesn't show up very well, but is your concern that since this isn't in the town currently? We don't know what developer might come with what type of proposal, if it's adjacent to an R two, are they gonna ask for residential zoning right along the frontage road?
Well, our plan, cause.
Our comprehensive.
Yeah, right.
Our comprehensive plan. We were trying to put commercial.
Plus there's a road there.
Mm hmm.
But the argument could be made, well, you just own this. Residential.
Again, I know what to make of. I don't know that it matters, but what I do see is we have a highway there. That we are. That is mostly commercial, and it, you know, it's going all the way.
Do you realize that there's two houses right next to that area on that side of the road?
Yeah.
There's two little.
So they.
Plans.
Somebody lost them a lot of money and those houses could be gone.
No, no, I mean new houses. On, by, yeah, so on the corner there.
Oh, south of fifty.
There's no house.
Right. Yeah.
Yes.
I didn't.
Yeah. So, I mean, there are two could fit, because that's right next to those two tiny little. Buildable lots.
Okay.
As well, I mean, I mean, it's both.
This, this entire Columbine Estates is zone R two.
And they have addresses.
But that's back.
Yeah, this, yeah, it's the.
That's in the, that's west of the property. Which I was.
But it's right.
I guess I was already looking.
Next to it, cause it's not a perfect square.
Right, but.
I think, yeah, I think. Either R two or C three makes sense to me, I don't know that there's a fundamental difference between the two, but Lisa, we kinda got a little off track and you did ask a question, could you repeat the question?
Well, my specific question is. If it's zone R two, how would that affect the one that's next to it? That's C three, or a future one that's C three, or would it not affect it at all? Or vice versa, if this is zone C three, does that have any effect on this R two or any future development?
Place some restrictions on certain businesses that may want to locate to that C three parcel, because we're changing it to R two.
I don't know that the zoning of the.
Well.
The zoning of this, the zoning of this parcel affects the, this parcel.
Industrial.
I. Are, right, are, are two or C three, this property can't be developed for anything other than drainage unless the town is.
Trying to change something. It's impact on its surrounding.
I think I answered that, R two or C three, the zoning of this property affects the zoning of this property.
That is not necessarily true, because you can only have liquor stores in certain places, the ever-present marijuana issue. All, there, I mean, there's several different issues, so my question is. R two, C three, does that change anything for any adjacent properties now or in the future?
Not based on any code requirement or any existing town code, there are no buffers from a residential.
Okay, that's all I wanted to know.
There's a two hundred foot buffer, I'm, I'm sorry, I was thinking about it differently.
I'm sorry, I thought I was being fair.
No, I'm sorry, you're, you're, I, I took me a minute to think through it all. There, relative to the marijuana ordinance that was passed by the voters, there's a two hundred foot buffer from a residential. Uh, zone district, so if this property was zoned R two. Then the C three zoning would have a two hundred foot. Buffer here to only one use, being a marijuana retail store or medical.
Aren't there stores for like? I mean, I wasn't speaking just to marijuana, I know we have several uses, land use code that have restrictions and requirements.
There are, I don't believe the liquor stores, do they have a residential buffer? They don't.
They don't.
They have other buffers from protected uses, but, yeah, but not from a residential category.
Is that C three lot that's still developable? Commercial building, even with a pot shop with a two hundred foot buffer, the two hundred foot setback, you put the parking lot on the south end.
I was not trying to.
I, yeah, I, yeah, the property is still developable.
It can be.
It truly can, and, and I'm, I.
So then.
I'm sorry, but.
Then I just say either. It, the argument really becomes a flip of the coin, if it doesn't impact anybody. Currently or in the future. Because you can't build ponds, I don't think we should. Hard, does it?
Wait, what?
I do see the value in. The consistency, like, right, of color. Um. A little bit about color, but. Um, and for future use, looking down south, I mean, I, I see that as a. Way to sway one way or the other. Yeah. Doesn't matter. And I, I'm just throwing out, that was our comprehensive plan. We get commercial on the highway. So.
The basis and some essence.
That's where my vote would reasonably go. But. And then.
You can, not official.
Don't even say the V word. I could go in C three, I would say it's. I think we're spending too much time on it.
Good.
I think it's important.
C three works for me.
C three.
And I don't know that it makes a, a significant difference, thank you for helping me understand the point of your question, and I was overlooking that.
Listen, that we didn't waste a bunch of time. Battling between the two, if there doesn't really have any significant impact one way or the other.
Well, essentially, if we wanted that.
In town, we needed to. We at least have a runway along the highway.
That's the crash zone. We can become.
That's. So C three, C three, C three.
I forgot about it, sorry.
Well, and the thirty and thirty one.
Those were the ones we talked about.
Those were the weird ones.
That's right. There's the, oops, right here.
Yeah.
Are staying public?
No, light industrial.
Light industrial.
We kind of already decided that.
Laura, your pinpoint was really close to him. Yep, right where your fingers are.
It's a skinny, skinny line. Skinny.
Private property on the other side of them.
And there's two right there.
For light investment.
I think consistency with for private, private ownership. Being the, there's one private owner, then there's the the um open space and drainage owned by the association. I think it makes sense. Does own the same light industrial, but. I I still think that they're they're not buildable lots, so I don't know if there's only makes a huge difference either way.
No.
Quickly consistency then.
We don't have a say on that.
Somebody's trying to look at all the, all the properties.
Each way open space drainage.
Yeah, it's outside the town limits. We don't have authority.
To number one.
So two and three are the. It's basically all the open spaces within. Sundance subdivision and Buffalo Creek subdivision. So it's. Tracks owned by the HOA. There's some drainage and and street scape. Um, along Stampede um and along um. Yeah, and then in Sundance subdivision, there's some open space. There's tracks that are would be for a future clubhouse someday. Um, so that's, that's what two and three are.
So that's just obviously.
And that's, that's what's currently zoned.
Four. Is that also two and three? Two.
Four is really. Four is really skinny. It's it's a, you know, four is a ditch that goes between backyards. It's it looks like.
Oh, it's three silos.
It's just drainage.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Over the number four ditch goes underneath the surface grains. Does there's that? Usement to handle.
I think for for most of map B, what you're going to see is what I, my impression is what's what. We just went through with map A, which was let's figure out what makes the most sense in terms of adjacency and ownership. Map B was as as a, it's it's on a separate map because I think you're going to find most of these. Makes sense with what they are today.
I would agree. I felt like there was old and new.
If you.
So I. Yeah. This consistency.
I feel like all of those, the four, five and six, that's all just part of the neighborhood, basically.
Five and six are actually Windsor ditch, um which is along the south side of uh Washington Avenue.
Okay, right here.
Yeah.
Part of the ditch company, but I think it's in the county.
Part of it is. Yeah, but yeah.
So how does that work?
So some of the parcels are are in the town. Yes, so.
Yeah.
It's just, it's a stretch that again is a little bit inconsistent with. And in a perfect world, when we annex land, we would annex the entire right of way, anything adjacent that's in public ownership. But that's not what happened um at the time, so we have some. Some holes. Um, but essentially.
But if it's just drainage, then it should be.
It's.
But it's. Five and six is the ditch.
That's that's. So it's. It's, yeah, it's.
It's the huge ditch.
So it's, so there's this portion that's in the town and. Have a zoning district assigned to it. Then this is the white space on the. The draft map because it wasn't annexed and then there's this space that is in the town and annexed.
So aside from being a giant ditch, does it have any trails or? Potential possibility for trails or people swimming or.
Crossing and and street.
No, only drowning happens.
So there's a, there is a ditch, there's ditch access road, but. They don't consider those public access, even though people walk in technically. They, that part of that goes through my properties. Which is must be part of town, but so that ditch goes right through there as well. They're all.
Just actually going through residential. House residential property.
Staff's thought process and that's what it is zoned currently.
Works so well.
Yeah, sneaking on the public that needs.
So the the one that I would point in, I think it's number seventeen.
What about question for you on V A?
It's in the county.
Yeah, yeah. The the cemetery is in the county. We included the cemetery and and our treatment facility simply because it was, it's. Public domain. It's, it was part of the conversation that we were looking at for how do you handle those facilities?
Needed with a river life church.
Oh, is that the one that we already suggested R three? Yeah.
Okay. That that was the one I noticed had a change in zone thing to.
Right, because they existed and it didn't have zoning and we'd recommended R three with the earlier map efforts.
The seventeen you said, and that was the other one.
Yeah, my my opinion is that number seventeen is worth a look and uh the. I appreciate that the the history is interesting and so I'll keep it really brief.
I'm not kidding.
No, I know, but I I think.
You know.
Yeah.
Did you guys do seven? Did you pick B seven?
I mean.
Yeah.
Even though it has a pocket park. Okay.
So it's there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Wait, where's seven? Oh, great. Wait, but if it has a park, then doesn't that then make it public? Isn't that what we said? The consistency.
That's what I was asking.
Well, the 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 bar we said. Right, but. Where is just because we're switching one way doesn't mean it's with the other city. So if it's public. Or have the existing trails and all that, right?
Say it's, it's, if it has a park, it's an HOA park. It's not public access. It's not dedicated.
Which has one of those. Okay, seventeen.
We're kind of not gonna mow it. Is where we're coming.
Tell us what you know, Cody. Seventeen.
Definitely drainage and open space right there.
The, yeah, I'll be, the the brief history is this is a property that was recently annexed to the town. It's uh country lane acres. Um, the. This portion along Box Elder Creek flows right here. Greater context, it's um adjacent to Wellville Park. Um, but the the town identified this at the time of annexation. Um, that's the, it's the area that's going to be partially encumbered by floodplain. It's. Provides connectivity to our existing park and the trail. Um, right now it's a soft trail or an access road here, but it provides a logical connection point to extend the trail. South through this area and further south. Um, there's a uh future front range trail initiative um that we've been talking to CSU, R deck, Laramie County. Um, other agencies, and this was the identified preferred alignment. For that regional trail system connecting us to Timnith Fort Collins and and et cetera. Um.
That's cool.
It is cool. Um, so the context is currently there's nothing out there except for some remnants of of the agricultural buildings that were there. Um, my recommendation, and I I put it on here as a possible consideration, was to. Consider that P public for open space and future trail. Connections. It is owned by the town. It is open space. It's unlikely to become anything but that because it's satisfied the open space dedications for. Country lane acres. So staff's recommendation was that that would be considered P public based on its anticipated future.
But it's inconsistent with what we've been doing.
And which is fine because it's.
The one that had the. Realized if trail couldn't be put there, but this is a very tangible, I feel like.
But we. But you're switching from.
I can switch. I can do whatever I want.
They, so so Terry commissioner or commissioner, Terry, sorry to question, country lane. Well, I almost called you commissioner, which would have given you more authority. Um, but um, so to the the question that Chairman Sarter brought up was. Will country lane acres have to be replanted? And the answer is yes. The, because right now this is, these are just two large lots. So for this to develop to something different, they'd have to come back to the town and and do a subdivision plat. When that happens at some point in the future, we don't know when. The recommendation from staff, whether I'm here or it's some other future planner. Is that their open space dedication requirements already been satisfied because that was part of the the conversations that we had with the owner. Um. The original subdivision plot or original master plan. They had identified like a pocket park down here and some other things. And I said, that doesn't make sense from a town standpoint. If you're going to plot this, plot it all at once, do it all together and dedicate the open space altogether. Otherwise, you piecemeal your open space dedications. Now these little fragmented parcels. And so what we, what we agreed to at the time of annexation was. This parcel dedicated to the town satisfies all of the open space dedication requirements for. Um, for the entire property and the proximity to. A regional park, they wouldn't need to have a pocket park. They just need to provide trail connection or sidewalk connections to get. Their residents to an area that already has.
But right now it has not.
Correct.
Well, gives us some justification.
But it's not just Bella.
I I think it's either way, right? It's there's not a right or wrong answer. R two makes sense. That's what it's shown as currently. Um, public would make sense also. Um, it's owned by the town. It's encumbered. It's not going to become anything but what the town decides it should be for future. I think that's fine.
Yeah, leave it and when they come back. Call a special. Going with this.
The more consistent we are with it, back to how we, then the less anybody.
I changed.
Okay, you're just giving that one.
The same nine. The sage PV. There, that's dirt. Right now. That's the existing proposed trail that goes through. That's going to connect the other side of the sage trail all the way around the neighborhood. So technically nine should be public, but it's dirt.
One and currently it's zoned P U D. P U D is the zoning for it. Though again, we were trying to identify all of the scenarios that the the parcel in Sage second is. Drainage, open space, future trail. The trail will be a public trail, but it'll be owned and maintained by the.
We're just looking at P's right now.
Right.
Well, I think that needs to stay the same because we are only identifying P stuff.
Yeah, I'm not.
We're not creating P stuff, so.
There are some more inconsistencies on this. Experience.
Yeah. I would leave this one out of the day for now. Yeah, mine.
Okay.
Thanks seventeen. So let's just leave it all R two.
And then did we?
Hey.
Come up with a consensus on.
Twenty eight.
Twenty eight.
Yeah, I mean, since. Was was the consensus. Okay. Any, any other questions or or suggestions on on that topic? I feel like.
The last two. I think they're all. Yeah. Yeah.
I want to say Patty did a great job on this. I I feel like that she. Just, yes, thanks.
You did. It was hard. You did. I guess some of them are. Labels again.
You did a really good job.
How good now?
This was really easy to follow. Apps. Thanks.
I feel like staff has good direction based on the conversation. Just to kind of wrap this topic up as a reminder, the planning commissions has. They, you know, taken a vote after a public hearing on the zone map and made a recommendation. On the zoning map. Based on this conversation, this feels to me like the planning commission may want to. Update that recommendation to include these considerations. Um, would you like staff to um advertise that for the March meeting to to formally consider a recommendation? Um, that can be forwarded on to the to the board of trustees? Or are you comfortable enough with? This conversation and sharing this information with the board of trustees at their public hearing?
It doesn't have to go back to a public hearing for us.
It doesn't have to. That's the part that I was looking at is if you want to make a formal recommendation. Based on these considerations that was to the board of trustees, then the best way to do that would be to encapsulate it in a uh. Uh, recommendation via vote at the March meeting.
Probably better to that. Let's put it on record.
Yeah.
Okay.
They can really blame us.
It kind of impacts the whole thought process and the consistency and everything that we did. And I think.
Station that followed the consistent process.
Except for that one.
Five minute recess to go beat him up in the parking lot?
In a darker parking.
So I'm ready to keep rolling with the next item. I'll I'll kick this off and then I'll I'll tag team it over to. To uh Mr. Dan Sapiens of the town attorney. Um, so this is. Um, primarily, this is a refresher. Um. We we usually do this around the first of each year, um kind of some housekeeping issues. It's always good to do reminders. Um. The planning commission has a really broad authority in in the town. You are responsible for. Adopting and maintaining a comprehensive plan. You guys did great. You just adopted a comprehensive plan on August second, twenty twenty one. And so we have a current comprehensive plan that guides the town's future development and future vision. Um, you're also responsible for um the land use code, which was adopted uh March twenty second and became effective April. Um, of twenty two and came became effective April twenty fifth of twenty twenty two. So you have a comprehensive plan. You have a land use code. Those were two really big undertakings for. Town of Wellington to bring those to kind of a modern standard and reflect our current needs. You also hear and decide and or recommend, as the case may be, on. A whole host of land use applications, annexations, zonings, rezonings, planned unit developments. Site plans, conditional uses. You have a a lot of different application types that come before you and you either make recommendations on those. That go to the board of trustees. Um, or in the example of a a site plan, you're the final authority. Um, in addition to all all those fun things, you also provide guidance to staff to make. Uh, adjustments or amendments to our planning documents, to our land use code. We make amendments to regulations from time to time. Based on emerging technologies. Um, all of those things, you're providing guidance to staff, you're directing that workflow. We're developing recommendations that go onto the board of trustees for final decisions. Um, I don't be remiss if I didn't say zoning now. Um, you make recommendations on updates to the zoning now. So. You've got a broad authority and you do a lot of things for the community. Um. What I wanted to kind of highlight tonight was some of the. Um, I'm always happy to answer questions on any of those things, but highlighting. Um, some of the the procedural elements that go along with those. Um, I'm sure all of you get tired of hearing my spiel for every public hearing where we go over, this is your, this is your public hearing procedure. We're going to go over it. I. I know I sound like a broken record. We will continue to go over that every public hearing because it creates consistency. It keeps us re- remembering that these are the steps that we're going to do. Um, and it's beneficial to the applicants to understand that meetings procedure and anyone watching from home or in the audience to know what to expect. So that there's a fair and consistent process. My apologies, but I'll keep doing it for you.
It's important, super important.
It saves so much time.
It it takes time, but it's. Um, so. I'm glad to hear that you're willing to put up with that. Um, but I wanted to also highlight when we do those those meeting procedures in public hearings, particularly for quasi judicial proceedings. Um, there are some some structural elements there that are more than just a meeting procedure. Um, a lot of it ties back to your obligations to the public to to maintain. Um, you know, a clear and unbiased opinion of the facts and information being presented to you to um. Disclose any information that you might have obtained outside of that meeting so that everyone at the table has access to the same information. Um, and the bottom line and why I invited Dan. Um, and the bottom line and why I invited Dan for some of these things. You could be the very deciding decision that is pivotal in a, in a legal case based on land use. And so making sure that you've adhered to all the rules and responsibilities. Of the role in the planning commission to safeguard yourselves, the town staff and everyone from a lot of headaches and save Dan some work. Um, so quasi judicial proceedings are, are pretty important. It's all of our public hearings. And every public hearing starts with uh, disclosure of any conflicts of interest. I won't dwell on that immediately, but I think that might be on Dan's, Dan's list. Um, it also includes um. Disclosure of exporte communications that we can also cover. Um, and then you have, of course, your meeting procedures, including debate, motions and votes and a final decision. Um, so. All of those things are, are extremely important and pivotal in those land use applications. And that's why we wanted to spend just a, a little bit of time tonight to, to cover those things. Dan, do you want, is this a good point for you to segue into quasi judicial? Or wherever you wanted to start?
I got some notes written down here.
Okay, perfect.
Um, I'm Dan Sapienza. If you love history, come talk to Brad March in our office and you can make this be awful five times. He's a great guy, but he knows that this being all the things. He's been, he's been a tap parent. As Cody mentioned. The. Some of responsibility for planning issues. Areas of action, very well, legislative action, quasi judicial actions, administrative action, and really of all of those. So legislative action is things that apply to everybody equally. Quasi judicial action is regarding one property. It's actually the, the requirements when it comes down to actually regarding one property are probably more important. So we recommend legislative action. Um, the export communications rules are somewhat out. Public interest rules, some of those. Are changeable. So it's kind of interesting when you're making decisions that affect the entire town. Uh, that's where you can talk to the public about what they. That's where the board of trustees can go out and talk to the public and say. What do you want here? They have one-on-one conversations outside of the realm of any of the others. They can have those what normally would be, you know, quasi judicial would be an export communication, but because it affects everyone equally. The requirements are a little different. So as you're thinking about these things, don't think. Well, this affects everybody, so therefore it's even more stringent. The rules are just a little different. Legislative actions you would take are um. To some extent land use code or no, well, certainly land use code, to some extent zoning. Definitely where it applies to. Town of Wellington properties. That's a legislative act. That's. Where it might be administrated. Um, that's really the planning commission as board trustees taking the action that affects. The town, really, the only party that's affecting. Um, recommendations to the board of trustees regarding the land use vote, that would be legislative. That affects the entire town of people. Certainly adopting the comprehensive plan. That's a legislative act. Quasi judicial or those hearings you have. That's what Cody goes through his list of all the really, really important steps you must take and I love that list. Because as long as he goes through that list, I know that the things are being covered. But quasi judicial. Decisions are affecting a single lane, a landlord, a single property or very. And so the reason we are so important that we follow those procedures for those quasi judicial items. When you decided that required a quasi judicial review is it really affects the individual's due process rights. It's protected by the US and the Colorado Constitution. So if you don't adequately protect their due process. Cue to the rules, make sure that. So directly, um, that's where losses. So that's why we'd like you to follow. Generally, your board or your commission, here's to. Do you, do you use Robert's rule? Do you use Bob's?
We use Bob's rules for meeting procedure.
Um, so I have Bob's rule. Our literally parliamentary procedure is kind of what the, that's all term for. Robert's rules is what everybody usually sticks with. Robert's rule was written a really long time ago to follow how Congress operates. And so Robert. Roberts.
Why do you?
Doesn't. No, that.
That's.
The proper original Robert. He wanted rules from co- US Congress. Cause he was working in these societies around the country. He was, I want my society to work. Consistent. Whether I'm in San Francisco doing something or I'm in. Kansas doing something. I want to make sure if I'm working on the boards, it's consistent. So let's be just like the US. So that creates a rule. Added to those rules, added to those rules over a hundred fifty years and uh, some odd years. And so now there's, I think they're on the ninth edition, tenth edition. And as, as you might imagine, the complexity of that document doesn't really lend itself very well to. Small local government board. It really isn't all that great for a lot of small organizations. I've been on boards of a lot of nonprofits over the years with five, six member, seven member boards and. They're trying to follow these rules that were designed for a hundred multi, you know, several hundred people in US Congress. And congressional rules really were not written, make things fast and effective. By other people, they were, they were written so that there is. You, you hear everybody's voice. They're written so that you make a good decision, but they're kind of cumbersome. That's. Very negative all along. So Bob's rules. Bob's rule written by Bob Widner, um, with part of municipal league. I don't even love this document, but it's. Better than if you're trying to work out the several hundred page Robert's rules. And Bob's rule is trying to simplify and make it. Make these complex rules more appropriate for a small body like, like this thing, like a small local government. Because you have certain things um, in Robert's rules that simply is, are not all that useful. So I like sticking with Bob's rules, but really what we'll work toward is getting a set of bylaws. With planning commission that sort of takes some of the simplified rules. I don't want to say jonesing down, but simplifies them a little more. Um, because what you want is a set of rules that allows this body to function. At the core of any of these is the chairman, chairperson, um. Sets the rules. You are the parliamentary. So if there's a dispute, you, you make a call. The rest of the body can override that. But what's important that you know. Hope you're studying. But the parliamentary rules that are written here are for legislative. So. When it comes to those quasi judicial hearings. Some of the rules apply when it comes to motions. But really. I would not stick too much to the. Order of meetings that was sent out in, in Bob's rule, Robert's rule. And that's why Cody's list of. Very clear steps that need to be taken in this quasi judicial hearings are important. Because. These rules. Are meant to make good decisions, to have a good discussion. We rule them not necessarily written to preserve or protect the due process rights of individuals. And that's why there's other rules. So you, you really. You toss these out the window almost when you start working on a public hearing. And again, that's why I like to do. Bylaws at some point. But Cody's done a very good job of kind of convincing what's important down to that list and running these meetings. Clearly by that list is important. Um, so if you're reading this and you say, well, we need to do it this way or this way. Cody's. Cody's words for a quasi judicial here is that I, I would, I would absolutely. Use that over Bob's rule.
But is possible for such a two bylaws?
It's actually, I believe in the town ordinance that the rule, the, the meetings of the planning commission will be, well, according to the bylaws. Adopted by the planning. There's a lot that goes into adopting bylaws, but the, the key part of it is, is, is stuck to how the meetings are run. And there is sort of a history of how the meetings are run. It will give us a very good guidance. But it's nice to get all that. So that's something we'll be working toward once we have, but, but yes, bylaws are very. You know, they'll help me answer a lot of the questions. And then if, they'll cover ninety percent of what we need. It's always gonna be those couple five, you know, to fall back. Places to look for some of the fallbacks.
What do you think the likely, uh, a reasonable timeframe to? Develop something that, that for this from planning, if you thought it's new year?
Though that, that Dan's input will be extremely valuable in developing bylaws and, and getting those adopted. I also know he's doing something very similar for the board of trustees. Um, in developing their meeting procedures and bylaws and things, so. Definitely on the radar things that we want to work towards.
This is hard to get them done this year.
Again, I've just, I was just, I mean, I know everybody got. Funny stuff to do. I just, I was just curious, what's a reasonable?
Kind of shooting for this issue. Um, I, I, as Cody mentioned, I'm working on similar. Sets of rules and procedures for the board of trustees. There's also other boards, um, and. Other advisory boards have been to town, but their ordinance is saying, and they have said for decades. So whether meetings according to bylaws that they will adopt and. You don't have a lot of bylaw. So, uh, but I think once I can do one, then. A lot of rules that need to be in some of the boxes. Okay, yeah, certainly open issue.
There's something I have to do about one minutes, just to really throw you off.
Sure.
So when I knew what was on the agenda, I was like, oh, what does the? What does the municipal say about planning, right? Um, it references few sections that don't. Sixteen and seventeen.
It references two sections that don't exist anymore.
They did at the time.
Right, so. You know, whatever, you need any more.
No, I, I actually haven't seen that.
Something like that's not helpful, he's giving me error. So that, that.
Yeah, uh, you're right. Sixteen seventeen used to be the. What zoning and.
Yeah, it was, yeah. No, eighteen is building, but yeah.
Yeah.
Essentially, yeah.
And actually that ordinance was just amended.
April twenty.
February of twenty.
Oh, yeah.
So right before, right about a year, right before the land use code was adopted and so. But we survive and we'll, we'll get there. But it's important and, and the, the ordinance is what gives this body its, its authority. So it's sort of on state statute and the ordinance is pleased to need to be.
Right. It's just like, it's only whatever. Powers are vested to you through whatever these two chapters that there exists.
And anything referred to the planning commission, so that's a pretty big catchall.
Yeah, I was just trying to get. Trying to have them. Trying to do my homework.
Yeah, but yeah, you're right.
Different stuff depending. And we could make some changes, which I don't know what those are because. It's not sixteen and seventeen.
Generally meetings, um, running meetings according to. Bob rule pretty, pretty simple. Standard meeting, your local, who members can send agenda, public comment. Things, um, if you do agenda items, you report standards, all residents, media. Within that action items, and that's where you have these, any, any part during. Any legislative items, you have allowed public comment for each, for the inflated type item.
Typically, the reaction we've given is that, you know, anytime it's not a public hearing, it's at the discretion of the chair. And I, I can't recall an instance where the chair hasn't allowed public comment or Donald's public comment.
Just allow it. It really is. And that's one reason, and one reason why we can't really adhere to Robert's rules strictly, because there's nothing in Robert's rules anywhere. Public comment. Of Robert's rules, this body deliberately. The, the legislative body, so you read strictly Robert's rules, you're saying, there's no doubt about.
They're making more, suspend the rules to allow public comment and.
So that's why we. Bother too closely and when you end your bylaw, it'd be far more important. I think it'd be nice to have that written down, including appendage interaction. If that's something you can cutter by within bylaws, it's getting some money. Um, you have discussion and various motions and you all, are you all comfortable making motions and seconding them?
Yeah, cause Cody's right, right.
That's, that's very helpful. And, and the reason we have motions and more second, we can say that is putting records. And you make the decision, you are acting as a. Subdivision of the town of Wellington. You are a government body, you're a public official. So if you ever have questions, I know Cody's good at writing motions. Um, I think, you know, somebody always try and all of these sort of things is trying to. Beat them to you where possible, but. Uh, makes, make a different motion.
Yeah.
That's, that's available to you. We're usually just provide some of the, like the basis. But being comfortable doing that is, is helpful. And different bodies do it differently, and give it your own vibe.
I was just gonna say that one of the, the common things that the planning commission will run into on. Site plans or conditional uses is what are the conditions that you want to attach? Um, a lot of times staff will, you know, we try to structure the report. We'll say. Here are some things that we thought of that you might want to include as conditions of approval. But we're really relying on the, on the commission to decide, is that the right thing to do? Are we going to require that or are we not? And a lot of it, we hear it during the, the meeting. Whether it's a public hearing or a site plan, we'll hear. You know, I have a concern about X, Y, and Z impact and you go, well, the staff report doesn't really address that. That's the perfect time to amend that motion. We heard this specific concern. There's a way to address it. We want to condition the approval on that. It's a perfect time to amend those motions.
And also related to the mending motions for that is, uh. Not just conditions for approval, but finding the fact, if there was some very important finding of fact that is, if you didn't stop or you can. Give your motion and I want to have this finding. Um, you usually provide the find, uh, like a sample list of findings. How did the findings you do with Bill?
Yeah, so that gets into how we, we write and structure the staff reports. We usually have a couple of sections. It's background information, some history that's always entertaining. Why, why do we have this set of circumstances that we're dealing with? Why is this request being presented this way? But then you have the, the, really the, the meat of the. Staff reporter, the staff can, I think it's titled staff considerations. Um, but that's, that's staff looking at all the things that. We think are, are important or could impact the decision based on this is what our code says. This piece of history was really important to how we got to this point. That weighs heavily on staff when we're looking at this. It's following, you know. You know, um. Our codes, it's, we heard, we got a call from a resident that brought up this concern. We usually include that if we've heard from someone, we'll include it in the staff report. We heard this comment from this individual. And that impacts the, this case in this way. So we do offer, these are all the, the findings or the facts that staff has come up with and you can rely on that as a basis. I've had planning commissions in the past just say, yep, we agree with everything the staff report says and that's our, that's our finding. Um, and I've had commissions go to um, ends of the earth to come up with something that's not on the staff report. Um, which is fine. I mean, but it's, they're your findings at the end of the day and we have to create a record of. The basis for what the planning commission is, is based in its recommendation or its decision. So really the findings are yours. The staff report is staff's opinion of what we've found and, and presented information to me.
And so that motion process and knowing the rules, I mean, to make a motion, have an amender motion. Plays out is more important, uh, because those findings of fact. And I think that to me, that I thought that would be one of those biggest areas, whether it be kind of complicated most of the spot. Finding that, might say. These are the things we found, but the staff report says X, Y, and Z, and we think. X, Y, and Q, you know, so these different ones, you might need to make a more complex motion. And that's. The record of that is incredibly important. Because those findings of fact. In my mind, are one of the most important things that come out of the quasi judicial. Because those, that is to explain. Why you said, yeah, right. That's. When somebody gets their. Whatever it is denied and they say, I'm gonna take it to court. Um, the first thing I'm gonna do is say, here's the evidence. Here's the findings of fact that the planning commission used to get to that decision. Um, and so that decision, yeah or no, needs to be backed up by those buttons back. So Cody brings in something that says, here's our report. You think it's, we'd recommend a yes for these reasons. And then as a board, you say, actually, we think no. That's all we're gonna say. Then somebody's gonna sue the town and we're gonna look forward and I'll say, here's the evidence. And here's the decision. And they'll say, well, where, where are their findings of fact and support that decision? I'll say. Here's the evidence that we have. They made no findings of fact and they said no. And they'll say that very clearly. Did not protect the property owner or the applicant's due process, right?
So that is proper procedure then. If you have findings of fact. A through Q. We discuss and want to add in addition. Since people are one team. Yeah, because we, we don't go through an individually list within the motion, all findings of fact. Yeah, because we, we don't go through an individually list within the motion, all findings of fact, it's just, you know, yes, no, table, whatever. It, it, so.
Cody does a very good job with his reports of listing the findings of fact, and there are many plan. He's great, I love him. Does a fantastic job of, of, of. Providing you what you need in a very defensive way. And so as he goes through and he says, here are the standards, and here are the fact, these are the evidence on the finding of fact, if you as a board simply want to adopt that. We can't. You can say, we, as a board or as a commission, adopt his findings of facts. For this meeting. If. You look at those and go. L, I don't really agree. Or there's another one I want to add it, add it in, absolutely, you should add those in, and you could do that a couple ways. Through the discussion, you could tell Cody, Cody, I'd really like to add a. That really won, you want a motion that adopts the standards. With additional findings of fact, we can make additional.
But if there's one you don't like, then you can't do that.
If there's one you don't like, you would adopt his, removing one. So you could always amend his report to add or remove findings of fact.
Kind of do that in.
Cross them out and then they move.
The way we've been doing it is to kind of go through each of the, like, the, the criteria, the, the findings for approval, or I think now it's A through F for a rezone, there's other findings for different cases. But we kind of go through them and say, okay, this was the first finding. This is what you have to consider, here's what staff presented, what else was important to the planning commission, and I kind of take notes on it. Um, usually written, sometimes typed it, but then I, at the end of the, at the end of the. This discourse on all of those findings, I, I try to read back to you, this is what I heard you saying.
Yes.
This was important, this was important, this was not important. The, the, so the basis for your decision. Included some positive findings, some negative findings, and some neutral findings. That is the record that we then type up and we provide to the applicants, it's part of our record, it's that this is the set of findings of the planning commission.
Yes, those have to be recognized inside the Belgium.
Because when you essentially then are moving to adopt. As he's written it out, edit the new one, almost, not necessarily the one in the packet, you say that, however. You, Cody, read that out, somebody makes a motion to approve his, that, that report, you know, as the findings of that. Second, and you start discussing that motion, and then somebody says. Wait. The most important thing to me was. Z, and that's not in the report. Now, you've got his report that's removed, what you should then do is. Like the move to amend his report. So it needs to be documented, so after the motion is made, if you then change it later.
Um, you can amend at that point.
You sure you can, that's, there's a main motion, you can amend, now the way you do it is cleaner. I like the way you do it, but however you do it, it needs to be documented, so knowing those rules i- is can be very helpful.
Yeah.
All I can say is it's a wonder the planning commission and town board didn't burn this town down before you started here working here. It kind of did in a few places.
So, and I have a question, kind of going to what you're telling me, like, so we make. We make our recommendation, we vote on our recommendation. So it's just a recommendation, right, but it's based on finding of facts. And then that goes to.
To the Board of Trustees.
Board of Trustees. And same we back recommended yes to some of them, right? We have all these findings of fact, and then the Board of Trustees says no. And their findings of fact contradict us.
They, they, the Board of Trustees and the, kind of step two, they have to hold a quasi-visual during as well.
Right.
So then they basically, Cody gives the same spiel to the Board of Trustees to say, here's the process we're going down. Now, they also have to hear evidence, they have to have a record in front of them, and if they look at the exact same information you do. You said, for these reasons, we say yes, and the Board of Trustees says. For these reasons, we say no. Well. There's a chance there's a lawsuit, but both are based on. That can happen, absolutely. And that could be upheld, because that doesn't mean that either is wrong. You can apply the evidence. This decision was based on these standards, these findings, in fact, I find that A, B, and C support finding A, these people, the board can look at it and go, ah. I think D is most determinative in factor A. There, this, this fact, I mean, therefore, A, B, and C are as important, that's why we're overturning it. So the board takes your recommendation and make.
But so then are they voting to overturn our recommendation?
They're just, no, your decision stands, they are making, they make the decision, you make a recommendation.
Sometimes it gets more feedback. When people show up to their meetings, they find something in there that we didn't even hear.
And I guess this would even go with, we agreed, but I foresee it more in something where we do disagreeing. What are our protections, right? Like, can we get sued? Cause we don't work for the town, we're not elected.
You are official body of the town.
Okay.
I mean, you individually, one, as a planning commission, the planning commission is protected by the town's liability insurance. Somebody wants to sue, they're probably gonna sue the town, you could get sued individually, sure. Um, but as a, if, if what you are doing is a, as a. Uh, if what you're doing is. It's essentially, essentially.
Well, and that's where those questions come from.
But if you, if, if, as a planning commission member, you step. Holy outside of the realm of what you should be doing, if you start showing up at, uh. Buildings in town and you go, I'm a planning commission member, that is out of code, you're shut down, and you start doing that. You get sued for that, the town might not represent you, but for this sort of deliberative process, the, you are acting as an official. And, and a town official, you are acting as a town body. Um, so yeah, but.
So we are covered.
Can be covered, you can still get sued.
No, so this comes from because we're getting insurance for safe access school for. Then that's when you start thinking.
They're grounds at school.
But it made me start thinking, do we have protections as a planning commission?
And I, without being too esoteric, one of the, the greatest protections is to always do what's right. And, 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 you know, doing it right means following the process, doing your homework, you know, being. Uh, open to information presented to you, I've sat through meetings where I've written a. Twelve-page staff report and someone comes from the public and says, but what about this? And it wasn't anywhere in the report, and it changed my mind, so having that open mind to hearing the information is really key to being a, a good planning commissioner.
Right, absolutely, and that's, that's what these rules are for, that's why, that's always like some bylaws, but that's why the, the. Checklist is very repetitive, go down, we need to do these things, that's what that's for, make sure, do good decisions. Coming in with an open mind and not being biased as you. Uh, predetermining the, the application before the, that everything's presented. Um, making your decision based on the evidence that's in front of you, you follow those steps. That's. That's gonna. Either you get sued.
Stuff some of these stupid persons.
This checklist is, is fantastic, but that's also, you know. Avoid some. Potential problems.
Right.
Ex parte communications, so you talk about those, that's something that I absolutely like to talk about, ex parte means. From or on one side or. Basically, when you've got something in front of you and you go talk to the applicant. Or if something's in front of you and go talk to the person across the street who's yelling really loud about how they don't want that to come in, and you have that one-on-one conversation outside of the public. Realm, you then bring that into your, if you bring that into your decision-making. That's using evidence from outside if you're in to make a decision. So what happens if? You do participate, participate in a meeting, what if I come up, you know, now that there's problems, I'm looking at Lisa. So, uh, outside of the meetings, somebody, the applicant comes up here and says, I'm talking about this, this hearing. Cool, you know, I, I really think you should drop this. I mean, well, how do you respond? Like, do you have a, do you all have a?
We can't discuss this in private, if you want to discuss this, it just has to be taken care of in a public meeting. I can't talk about this.
Yeah.
And I, and I recommend, it would be better than here, just to know off the top of your head, when your next planning commission meeting is, Ellen, there's just.
First Monday.
The first Monday, I mean, it's always the first Monday, so. Come talk to the planning commission, uh, at our meeting, you know.
Right.
You want to discuss that, it needs to be, so be ready to.
Yeah, you can also always say, you know, that might be a topic that comes before the planning commission, I can't speak to it, you can contact town staff. You can always refer people to staff and we take notes.
We didn't stop conversations before, like, we've talked about this, where I wasn't sure. How Board of Adjustment and Planning Commission interacted, or if they did, and somebody called me, and I was like, no, no, don't talk to me, but. Cause I wasn't, I didn't want to. I just didn't want that to happen, and I, I actually stick, like, I still just would rather not.
Just, it's just a good practice, but something to get used to, and in your role as planning commission member, people will talk to you. Absolutely, people will try to talk to you about things that are coming.
I need to get my perfect while I'm waiting, can I talk to you about the planning commission case?
Yeah.
I do give your number out a lot.
Yeah, give him Cody's name, staff.
Is our senior planner and his first.
Not why at the beginning of the quasi-visual hearing, there's the ex parte communication. You can correct the problems. Lisa, I really want to talk about this application, he's coming up, you really shouldn't approve it, because it's really, really fantastic, I, you know, they, they spit it out before you can even say no.
Right.
Or you open your email.
Or you can't unhear.
Sentence of it is, stop this for X reason, right, like. My bad.
Yeah.
That, that's why that's at the beginning, if you can really cure almost any ex parte communication. Beginning of the meeting, say, I talked to so-and-so, they told me X, Y, and Z. That will not have an effect on my decision-making, I will continue to make my decision in an unbiased way, hearing all the evidence. And in fact, almost any ex parte communication, we wouldn't. Now. If you don't stop the communication, and you go out for some drinks, you, uh, you know, go take a tour of the facility, you guys go on a trip to Cancun together to talk about it. Now your ex parte communication is probably across the world. You don't do that. But, but probably a number of lines. Let's, let's recuse yourself and why'd you resign, really. But, but just because you have an ex parte communication does not mean you have to accuse yourself, you just close. And the reason you disclose it is that everybody then. Knows that same piece of information more, so now the entire board is in on the ex parte. But more importantly, the entire public is in on the ex parte. So then I'm sitting here going, well, I disagree with what that person told Lisa, so I get up at public comment, and I say. And that point that was made outside of this meeting, I refute that by saying. So then it gives the public an opportunity to refute it, so it brings then everybody in, it basically turns that ex parte communication into a. Public discussion. So, very important to disclose, even if it's minor, I think just disclose, 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 almost any. Problems that you might have, there might be conflicts, a lot of things. Step one. Tell everybody about it. That's probably gonna fix it.
And Dan, I want to jump in, because earlier in a conversation, Dan brought up a really good point, which was a site point application. Should you go by the property and look at it? Is that ex parte communication? And the simplest answer is, yeah, you should be familiar with a, with a, with a property that's coming before you for a decision. And if you have to drive by to look at it and understand what's going on in that context, just say that in the meeting. This, disclosure of ex parte communications, I drove by this property and took a look around to see what the, what the surrounding architecture looked like. That's it, that's all it takes.
Should we take a video to share so everybody can see? Don't knock on the door. Are you good? Just record the conversation.
But, but, but really is, part of the communications are. Information, it's not just about someone to come to talk to you, you go and seek out that, you go by the property, you go. And where is this?
Yeah.
It's about telling the board that, and I, I actually would ask that you not do a whole lot of outside research on things, so. You know, seek out a whole lot of ex parte information, because you need to make a decision based on the record that's in front of you, but something like a, a site is. I would call that, like, the ex parte. If you're gonna do it, do it. If, if you need to do that, to kind of understand what's going on.
Again, the history of the board.
Right. And I think it's, it's. That, you know, like Dan said, you don't, you're, you're not a, a paid staff to do a ton of research. Outside of what's presented to you, that's what we have a staff for. But if there's something that you're not getting, and you say, gosh, I'd really like to have more information about X, Y, and Z, it's a perfect opportunity at the meeting to say that. Hey, staff, we'd really like to have some more information about X, Y, and Z, we don't feel comfortable moving forward with this agenda item without that information. You can table that item to a later date to allow staff to do research for you and bring you back the information that you're looking for to help you make the decision.
I'm the sort of person who likes to. You're talking about this map, and I'll go there on the GIS, though. Need to do my own research, um, so this is not a good rule for me. But disclosure, ex parte communication, disclose, 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 to make sure that everybody is privy to the scene.
Real quick, I was just gonna throw out there too, written communications, like you get the email, you know, with the subject line, oh my god, don't do this. Send those to staff, if you get a written communication that is gonna be subject to ex parte anyhow, send it to staff, we'll compile it, we'll have the entire package. These are all the public comments that were received on this particular application, and we put it in the packet. Everyone has the same information, there's no need to disclose it, it's all there. Broad daylight, everyone.
Is that something that you carry with us? Each individual. Comment so that it's not.
Typically not, typically if it's in the agenda packet where it's published, everyone has access to the same information, we don't usually go. Through the list and say, we heard from this person, this person, this person, it's just, we say, we received written communications and they're in the packet.
Well, I'm asking, is that specific written communication included and not summarized by staff?
Oh, if we have it, I mean, sometimes you get a. Sometimes you get a, sometimes you get a summary of, we were on the phone with so-and-so, and this was the.
If you get twenty emails about one site. Right? Twenty people have something to say, will we see the comments of the, the individual twenty?
You will, but I'll say that there, there's always an exception to the rule, sometimes emails have attachments of five hundred pages, and. We're not going to include emails with five hundred pages of attachments in a packet, but we'll probably summarize, this was their comment, or, you know, this was their memo. And exclude the attachments because of the bulk or what have you, so there's, there's exceptions to the rule, when there's questions, we consult with Dan, what, how much of this do we need to include? We usually ask, you know, does any of this need to be redacted, and, you know, for, you know, personal identifying information, phone numbers, things like that, but. As a general rule, most of the communications you're going to receive as a planning commissioner is a. I'm a so-and, I'm so-and-so, I live here, I'm opposed to this, or I'm in favor of this, and it's usually pretty short and sweet. The ones that have large attachments and other things, which I get them, you might get them. It's usually a pretty short message with a whole lot of information that's not related.
Related email, I want to talk briefly about some open meeting rules. It's been Colorado, or three or more of you. Get together and talk about business, that's a meeting as a planning commission, so we'll do that. If three or more of you get together. And have a drink. You get together and have dinner and talk, and you want to socialize, cool, that's not a meeting of planning. Open meetings law is about making sure that the official business of the town is conducted by the public. That means don't get together, that means don't get on a Zoom call with three or more of you and talk about business outside. Don't get on a phone call, and don't send emails, don't send bulk emails among the planning commission talking about official business. Just as a general rule, don't do it. What is official business? Anything related to policies of. Had a policymaking ability of this, by the. So. You want to send emails around for scheduling purposes? Yeah, you can do that. Cause it's just, I'm available on this day for a special meeting, I'm not. There are other exceptions, but generally I'd ask, just don't. Avoid email, won't emails between you, Cody can send all of you a message. Just don't hit the file. Unless you guys point copy any.
So, yeah, let's get together, we're talking about how goods go use.
Yeah.
Really about the policymaking ability of the board, but about the, it's about the business of this, of this entity, so. It can be real tempting to. You know, a bunch of us, I want to talk about the map. Let's just get together. Let's just get together outside this meeting and talk about. Well, that's a violation of Colorado. How do you remedy that if you accidentally have a big conversation? Just close it. Come to a meeting and say, we got together and we talked about that. And then we'll say, don't be. But then we'll have a discussion. But just avoid. You give questions, let me know. Um, but but the purpose of it is, three or more of you, don't get together and talk about official business. Um, public's ventures, this is what gets everybody really excited when you have to have to refuse yourself. So the town code two two six. Whenever an official is going to read this part. Yeah, whenever an official employee is required to deliberate and vote on any matter in which he or she has any substantial interest. The official employee shall give notice of said interest to the public body as reasonably possible consciousness. And recuse himself in that. Substantial interest. Recusal is required. Under the town code, if you have a substantial interest in what you're voting on. A substantial interest means any situation, including without limitation to a financial or personal interest in the outcome of a decision in which. Considering all of the circumstances, a reasonably prudent person observing the situation would expect the market tendency to make a decision other than an objective decision. Clear, right?
No.
That's why you need to ask questions. Talk to Cody and Cody Cody's gonna talk to me, really. What we don't want is there to be a conflict of interest. And if you if you're thinking, well, my cousin. Once worked for the business and now they've got an application in front of us, do I need to recuse myself? Because I they used to work there. No, that's probably not a substantial interest. If your kid works somewhere. And that business has a application before the planning issue, is that a substantial? We can talk about it. If you work somewhere and your employer has. An application, that's probably a substantial. But it is a fuzzy definition. But it's because each situation is different. We don't, we can't like have a blanket rule of. Always recuse yourself with this line, that that's the line, don't cross it, because that each situation is is a little. And. It's fuzzy to give you some room also. It's it's about how the impact it's gonna have on your decision making. We want you to make a good decision. We want you to make you to look at something and say. Despite, okay, my cousin looks there, so I have I have an interest in this. But it really has no impact on my decision. Really about the impact on your decision. I know, but. Ask questions. Step one is ask. I mean, it really, if you think there's even a slightest bit of conflict. Dr. Cody, like it's better that we talk it through in advance than get into a planning commission meeting and you go. Oh, yeah, I guess I kind of have a conflict. I I own twenty percent stocks as a business, but I I didn't think that was really, let's talk about it before. Because conflicts make the entire commission look. Conflicts don't look good. Um, and it's about appearance as much as it is about. Effect on your decision making, sorry.
So I think I've talked to you about this, or what is, is there gonna be a recusal process? Because. Sometimes it was suggested you have to leave. Listen to see. Other times they suggested you actually physically leave the room, which has the town have.
The town code currently says you have to be. Okay, I would ask anybody who has a conflict of interest on the planning commission that you need your occasion to. If you're sitting up there and you have to report a conflict on a decision that is. Requires recusal, meaning you have a real interest in that. I want you to stand up. I want you to leave the room for the entire consideration of that. Because you sitting in the audience. Then it looks like you're having an effect on that decision making process, whether you would, no matter where you are. And certainly you're continuing to sit up there in your seat. Looks like you have an effect on the process. So no, the town code does not require that. But I will absolutely will ask that you do that because you should. Um, the conflict is about. Preserving the due process of that. The conflict is about. A conflict in one action affects how people perceive the entire body and it affects how people perceive every decision made by the body. So um, I I please, if you have a conflict.
Well, I I I've seen other instances where, not on this board, where recusal. Someone state stated place.
According to our town code, that's all that's required.
And also made comments on something that was, that's like, wait a minute. So I'm just curious that.
So if you have a conflict and you need to recuse yourself and it's recusal, not abstention. You have a conflict, you recuse yourself of consideration, leave the room.
I'm really good at coming to the door and telling you, we're done, you can come back in.
Yeah.
We said, touch on this a little bit. The the boundaries. I don't maybe boundaries in my word, Board of Adjustments, Planning Commission, Trustees. You know, all of these groups. Are we kind of to kind of put our head in the sand and not know what the other? Boards are doing, you know, like the the, so it's kind of like. Something could start with the Board of Adjustments. Then come to the planning commission. Then go to. Well, you know, okay. Right, so us kind of knowing what's going on, obviously I'm watching trustee meetings, you know, and I think all of us do. You know, but trustees, should they be avoiding seeing what we're talking about?
Well, we we made a change to the ordinance recently there, remove the trustees from playing. That was for a couple reasons, but one of them was. Just what we talked about with expertise communications and 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 making your decision based on the record. The record that's in front of the planning commission, if one trustee knows all of that. And then they are also participating in the next step. And they have information that the rest of the trustees.
And the whole back.
That that whole thing was, we we separated. Right, all right. And so so that was very intentional to remove the trustees. But it doesn't necessarily go the other way. So if members of the planning commission want to be aware, you know, go to. The meetings of the board of trustees, you won't have a quasi judicial hearing at planning commission on an issue. Right, Board of Trustee, I mean, I guess if they deny it, then maybe it could. If I suppose I would ask that. Well, I don't think you need to wall it on complete. So if you want to be, if you want to be a planning commission, then we want to be aware of what's happening at the the Board of Trustees. I think that's.
Well, I guess I'll give you an exact example. So the asphalt plant. Okay, that was approved with their variance. So will we be getting a site plan here? But.
We will get a site plan.
But then, and they're not looking at site plans. I'm just talking this out loud. Okay.
Because it's really two.
It is completely two different issues. Yeah, because they're coming.
Let's just say there was another subject. And we go, that's gonna mess up our time. We can't recuse ourselves, can we?
Well, I don't know. We already suffer, let's just be clear.
They already have opinions.
I I think the key is, can you make a decision that's based on the 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 record that's.
Obviously, you already have.
If if you really think that's a conflict, say at the beginning, say. I'm here, so I'm concerned about traffic. Make make people aware of that, but then as you're reviewing the criteria. Perhaps don't wait, no, maybe you do wait traffic.
I did, I mean, we say, we need to sage one over there, I.
Close it, but I don't know. That's why your members in the planning commission, I mean, you're here to make decisions, but you're all the members of the community. And so if you had to recuse yourself from every every decision that affected a property near you. I mean, that's. If the criteria was completely neutral, it wouldn't be effective. Planning Commission of Wellington, if people come in. They can make really neutral decisions about what happens in life. It's probably not great. Question real quick on on separation. It's actually allowed under the town ordinance for a member of the planning commission to be a member of the Board of Adjustment.
That's what I thought.
And and part of the reason. Is there two separate tracks? Something comes from the Board of Adjustment, there is no appeal to the planning. Something comes from the planning commission, you don't appeal to the Board of Adjustments. They are, they deal with different. And related, which is why we thought that would make sense, because it all has to be with.
Look at the same set of codes.
But different, different kind of goals. And so we thought it would make sense to have them all last. If you wanted to be aware of what was happening at the Board of Adjustment, you absolutely. I think if if you saw something on a board of trustees. Agenda and you said, I'm really interested in that because there's this other item that's coming for the planning mission that's related. Maybe think twice. You know, I don't know. Don't seek out the information that you know with them.
You know what? Cody does a really good job keeping us in the dark these last minutes.
I think that was a problem.
I think bylaws. Important to know just what you do and 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 think about it as not just quasi judicial, but you're also legislators. So you've got a lot of different acts that you do. Sometimes certain rules apply, you follow those, sometimes you got different rules. Cody does a pretty good job of saying, use these now and use these.
But if we had a a reference point when we have a question about. How to do something or what's it needs, that would probably happen in the bylaws.
And we just ask.
That's the goal, but right now I was going for.
Yeah.
I will say this for Cody, no, three three Cody, we would get the agenda Friday night at six, seven o'clock at night. With Cody now, we get the agenda at five or six or seven o'clock on Friday night. Very, very, very well put, set out and it's understanding. Those agendas were horrible.
Questions, I'm I'm available, I I'd be happy to.
Your binder away. Finder, we have stuff.
While we're hands out. Dan, could you, could you talk briefly? I didn't give you a heads up on this, but I think it's a softball differences between um. Uh, recusals and abstentions.
Yes, actually, I thank you.
To to me, and and maybe you just correct me where I'm wrong here, but. Oh, yeah, the two different documents. Um, recusals and like a conflict of interest means you completely remove yourself from the room. An abstention just means I'm going to not vote on this topic.
Who's to not vote on this?
Which usually ends up as a no.
Because that's one of the reasons I don't want you to like. The reason I don't want it, we don't want it. You're, you were appointed to the planning commission to make a decision. You can't make a vote and you choose to just say, I don't feel like making a decision on this. It probably shouldn't be on the table. An abstention is me saying. I choose for personal reasons to not make a decision.
So how does that apply to, uh, again, I think I think they'll be answered, but. You know, I know people have abstained uh, from voting on the draft approval if they weren't at meeting. But it's correct, that subject only, yeah.
On on minutes? Vote on the minutes. You should always vote on the minutes. You're a member of this body, even if you're at a meeting, you can vote on.
You can read it, okay.
Not about saying, I I guarantee that absolutely everything in here. I can vouch through my personal experience, this is what. Well, voting on the minutes means one. Based on my experience, I'm pretty sure this is, but even if you weren't there, it's saying. I have confidence in the person who made the vote these minutes. I have confidence in the process by which these minutes were created and were proven. You should always vote on. Mention. And abstention on that one, maybe I don't care quite as much, but. Why abstain?
I I wasn't sure since I had no firsthand knowledge, I would vote on something I could just.
In the past, that's actually the the minutes, the very reason why I brought this up, because I think there was, there was not. Clear guidance on what.
You started the.
Rob Roberts explicitly says that all membership vote. All membership. And and essentially in that case, it has no real effect. It could hurt form. You know, if you're not, if you're close, then the minutes might not pass. And it's really mostly it's a vote on faith in your secretary. Or whoever it is that's. And. But it's about saying that previous meeting, this person. Drafted this person.
Mostly he checks them.
Faith in how they're creating. If you have personal experience and you're saying. Think the, you know, so and so made the motion right, correct them, make sure they're right, but but vote on. But an abstention on anything else. Probably you shouldn't be on board. If you're if you're unwilling to make a decision on anything. I am not going to place a vote on it. I'm not gonna vote on it.
Vote present.
The reason people sometimes do it is. Uh, well, so like you had this discussion, I mean. This discussion about C three down here or R whatever you're gonna vote on. In many bodies, you know, boards and other things, you'll see when it's contentious like that and you have somebody who's kind of off to the side and they say. I'm gonna, I'm gonna abstain. I'll just let everybody else decide on this. I'll abstain from this decision. Perhaps they wanted it to be one way and they're. Like, they're like, this should be light industrial. And everybody else says, that's not even light industrial, you know, I'll just abstain. It's sort of a, I know I'm not gonna. Not gonna vote. And that's how it's often done. Vote. Um, recusal is importantly different. Recusal is, I have a reason that I should not be participating in this discussion. I'm gonna remove myself from the discussion. And uh, if you're gonna recuse yourself. You also should not be participating in discussions. So you shouldn't get to the very end, talk about all of this and then get to the vote on the motion and go. Oh, yeah, I have a conflict. I'm gonna recuse myself, that's why it's at the beginning. Announce your conflict, you're recused. Get out of the room and you don't participate at all because you have a conflict. That is recusal. You have stepped outside of the entire decision making process. Abstention is really at the end going, well, I'm not, I I'm not gonna put the vote. And and it, if you're not willing to place a vote. Like I said, why are you a member of public decision making body? Minutes are one of those things I've seen the tensions on minutes many times. It happens all the time, but really it shouldn't.
Is there a certain number of years you should be on the board or not?
However many you've been on the board plus.
And you ask that question every year and it's always plus one. It's like your beers on Tuesday night.
I was gonna say, once on the planning commission, it's like a life sentence.
You want for the record. Hello, something without Barry. Probably a year longer than me. But then he's been gone, so. Only two years ago.
I'm a planning commissioner in my last community, thirty two years on the planning commission. He had a twelve year stint on the on the city council in the middle of that and went back.
You've you've got time to sit. Thank you all, thank you, Dan.